Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Select Board meeting for Wednesday, April 13, 2022. This meeting is being held remotely pursuant to Chapter 20 of the Acts of 2021. The meeting is being recorded and broadcast by Milton Access Television. My name is Katie Conlon. I'm the Chair of the Board. Would everyone please introduce themselves?
Arthur Doyle, Vice Chair.
Mike Zulis, Secretary.
Melinda Collins, Member.
Richard Wells, Member.
Henry Fagantown Administrator.
Linda Napoli, Administrative Assistant.
Thank you all. A couple of items before we get started. Well, why don't we go to our Pledge of Allegiance first? We'll start and then we'll get to some of the agenda changes. So if we could put up our photo of the flag, we will stand and recite the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. All right. Thank you, everyone. A couple of housekeeping items. We had a Governor Stoughton meeting scheduled. If there is anyone here for that meeting, I'm going to ask the board to defer that item. We are waiting on some guidance from Town Council on that item. And a couple of the meeting minutes at the end of the meeting, I'm going to ask the board also to defer, if that's agreeable to everyone. And seeing or hearing no objection, then we will do that. First, Mr. Doyle asked to be recognized, and then we have a public hearing. Mr. Doyle.
Thank you, Madam Chair, recognizing that aside from the possibility of a brief meeting of the Select Board between now and Election Day, this is probably the last full Select Board meeting that you will be chairing and that former Select Board Chair Melinda Collins will be attending because, if I remember correctly, the policies that were reviewed eight o'clock on Election Night, the two of you enter into the world of being former members of the Select Board. And I just wanted to, while the public is attuned and avoiding the late hour of recognizing both of you for your outstanding service, particularly during a universal pandemic, and I ask my colleagues if they would join in applauding both of you on your upcoming rests.
Retirement?
I don't want to use that word.
Well, thank you all.
Pension checks will be in the mail in 30 days.
Pension checks? Wouldn't that be nice?
You had nine years to negotiate it. It's too late now.
Too late now.
Funny idea. The two of them will not be leaving us very soon. I'm sure they will participate in other town functions with their expertise.
They've already been appointed.
Well, thank you all very much for the kind words, and I'm sure Ms. Collins feels the same way. So with that said, we'll open up our public hearing. We do have some visitors joining us, guests from Verizon Wireless. Paula Foley, I know, is the name on the application, and there may be others. So why don't we move Ms. Foley up to panelists? And if we have any of her colleagues who also wish to join as panelists, she will let us know. Ms. Foley, is there anyone else from Verizon or anyone on your team that you wanted to have speak this evening?
Yes, actually, yes, there's a few people from Verizon that are on the Zoom who are here and able to answer any questions you may have. First, there's Stan Yusevich from Verizon Government Affairs. Also, Sean Conway, he is Verizon's Principal Engineer for Small Cells in New England. And we also have two site acquisition specialists, Michael Patterson and also Hallelujah Haley. They're both available to answer any questions about this particular location if you'd like.
Okay, why don't we move those names over to panelists? And while we're doing that, let me just introduce this item. We have an application dated February 23, 2022, from Verizon. It's actually the name. It is Selco Partnership Doing Business as Verizon Wireless. So we'll open the public hearing into this matter. If there is a member of the public who is here in the attendee group who would like to speak, we will get to you at a certain time, and you can raise your hand, and we'll be happy to hear from you. But this is an application for a small cell wireless facility located at a pole at Guile Road. The application has been submitted. It's been reviewed by the Planning Director, Tim Sierwinski, who was also joining us this evening, and by the department heads to whom it was submitted. We have a policy that the Board approved on April 10, 2019, and to my knowledge, this is the first application under this policy. The policy is application requirements and aesthetic standards for small wireless facility installations. So why don't we, having opened the public hearing, why don't we turn this over now to Ms. Foley and her team if they would like to present their application? And then we'll have any questions from members of the Board or the public. Ms. Foley?
Yes, thank you very much. We greatly appreciate the opportunity to come before you today to present this proposal. Again, my name is Paula Foley. I am a network real estate consultant with Verizon Wireless. And as a short summary, we have submitted an application to install a small cell on an existing utility pole on Guile Road. Small cells consist of small, low-powered antennas attached either at the top or the side of the utility pole. This one will be located on the side of the utility pole. This application is submitted under the town's small cell standards, as you mentioned. And as part of those requirements, we submitted a comprehensive application that included detailed site and equipment plans, as well as a structural analysis of the utility pole and affidavits confirming compliance with state, federal, and local emissions requirements and safety standards. So we're happy to answer any questions you may have regarding this facility.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone else from your team who wish to speak? Or would you rather just respond to any questions that the Board may have?
Yeah, just questions at this time. Thank you.
Okay, does any member of the Board have any questions? And I also want to give the Planning Director an opportunity to speak if you would like. Any comments or questions from members of the Board? Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a quick question. How many of these do we actually have in town? Number two is, I understand how important infrastructure is in communications. How much is this going to bolster cellphone coverage in this area?
Sure. Well, Verizon Wireless currently has six small cells within the town of Milton, and all of these were approved by the town prior to the current policy that's in place. So this is the first one we're submitting under the policy. This particular location was identified by our engineers as having degraded service quality. There is a lot of wireless usage in this particular area. It is an area around the high school, between the high school and the football field. So there are...
No, I'm good. I'm good. That's all I need. Okay. Thank you.
I'll just follow up on that point. One of my questions was what's driving the need at this location? And what's the purpose? Why now? If this wasn't present before, what's driving it now? So if you could maybe elaborate a little more on that, just expanding on your response to Mr. Wells.
Absolutely. There has definitely been an increase in wireless users across the town, but in this area in particular. People have many multiple wireless devices now, and this is an area that, as I mentioned, our engineers identified as being an area where there was a lot of wireless usage and capacity issues. So this small antenna is designed to serve a discrete area, this targeted area in which the service needs a boost.
Okay. Have there been complaints that you've received for coverage, usage issues in that area?
We haven't received complaints from residents that I'm aware of, but I will also ask Stan Yusevich to comment on that. I will just mention our network engineers monitor the network constantly. So they are able to tell when there are dips and spikes in usage. So that's something that they consistently monitor. But Stan, do you have any information on customer complaints?
Not customer complaints specifically, but I do know that the concern from our end has always been public safety as it relates to the high school surrounding. Obviously, there's been an increase in use. You know, more kids have wireless devices now than ever before, and they're using them. And parents are depending upon being notified when to pick up and when to drop off and that kind of thing. So this is a classic case of where need and demand kind of intersect.
Can I ask one more follow-up to that, and then I'll see if any other members have any questions? You mentioned public safety, and I did see a reference to first responders in your application materials. Is that what you're referring to, or is it the parents communicating with students?
The concern is on both sides, both public safety and parents.
Right. We understand that the majority of phone calls to 911 do come from cellphones. So it is absolutely important to have a robust network that's able to support those calls.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus, and then Mr. Wells, and then Ms. Collins. Mr. Zulus, you're on mute.
Thank you. My apologies. Thank you, Madam Chair. I actually have a quick statement that a resident who was unable to be present tonight asked to have read.
Oh, okay. I was actually going to read that when we got to public comment, but why don't you do that now, Mr. Zulus? It's probably the same resident.
Yeah. Do you want me to do it, or do you want to wait?
Yes, why don't you do it?
Okay. It says, Dear Select Board, and perhaps we all received it, Dear Select Board Members, the purpose of this communication, and this is, I'm sorry, this is from Mr. Michael Bowden from 20 Guile Road, which is right in the area, right, very close to the proposed small cell wireless facility. Dear Select Board Member, the purpose of this communication is to make clear my objection to the installation of a small cell wireless facility on Guile Road. It is clear to me, and it should be clear to anyone paying attention, that the installation of this facility is not intended to solve any community shortcomings in wireless coverage, nor is it intended to enhance the lives of those who live nearby. Instead, this facility is being proposed simply to take commercial advantage of a sitting pool of users, parentheses, high school students at Milton High School, close parentheses, in our own backyard. I don't believe the intention of our town's small cell policy is to enable the profit growth of large corporations. The only beneficiary of this proposed installation would be Verizon themselves. The permit proves the location of the facility, parentheses, the closest possible pole to the high school, close parentheses, is to commercially benefit from the proximity to the high school. The increased signal capacity would entice students at MHS to consider Verizon's service over others in the area. I have lived on Guile Road since 2019. I am very happy with the existing wireless coverage available today. The installation of this facility will not add any benefit to me, my family, or my neighbors. The only beneficiary would be Verizon. If, to my sincere disappointment, the town approves such installation, the least the town could do is to make Verizon install the facility further down the road on the other side of the football field away from the residents. This would keep it out of view and the intensity of any radio waves away from me and my neighbors' homes and away from the school where our town's students sit all day. It's clear to me that this whole thing wasn't well thought out, and that's from, as I said, Mr. Michael Bowden of 20 Guile Road. So I think there have been responses to the first couple of paragraphs about the need and the purpose and the intended benefit here. So I guess the one remaining question from this, and please address anything you want from the statement, but at the end, there is a request to install the facility further down the road on the other side of the football field away from the residences. And so I guess that's at least one question that you might like to respond to. Thank you.
Ms. Foley?
May I respond?
Yes.
The small cells are designed to address a discrete area. The coverage area of these small cells is not very large. It's only roughly about a half a mile in each direction. So they really need to be located where the greatest need is for coverage and capacity. And our engineers have identified this area, the area that we're proposing, as an area of significant need. However, as I mentioned, the coverage area is actually really small, so we can't locate the antenna down the street in order to serve a particular area of need. So I think that probably sums it up. I don't know, perhaps Sean Conway, who is the Principal Network Engineer, would want to add something about our coverage capacity?
Mr. Conway?
I decided to unmute myself. Thanks, Paula, and members of the Board. Thanks for listening to us this evening. And as Paula explained, we pick a location based on the need in that specific area. Small cells cover a small area, but even more so, if you're looking at that location, you start going down Guile Road. I think the next pole has a transformer on it. The next pole after that, everything goes underground. So there's no more utility poles for us to use as you go up Guile Road. So we're out of options at that point.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Conway. Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Not to drag this out, clearly, by years as Chief, I'm very familiar with the facility and the communications issues we've had in the past 10 years in our own systems, our communication systems. We've had to install bidirectional antennas and radio repeaters on the top of the high school because it is a hole. You know, in addition to the high school, the Guile Road complex is a major place of attendance, particularly spring, summer, and fall for sports, and that's seven nights a week and every weekend. And they have an incidence there. I can think of one serious accident that happened a few years ago there. So just from the public safety aspect of it, and the fact that over 95% of all emergency calls in the state are now made by cellphone, I think it's prudent of us, I think anyone, if you were to bring Chief King or Chief Madden, when they talk about some of the holes that exist in cellphone coverage in the town of Milton, one of them is that big circle that goes from Canton around the Ullin Ring all the way up, covering the high school area. So from a public safety point of view, I do believe this is an enhancement for our community.
Okay, any other, Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. So I just want to make sure that I understand because I also received the same email. So it's a standard practice at Verizon, and I would be willing to bet other providers too, that when some sort of standard is tripped, like, you know, numbers go, you know, performance numbers go below a certain level or something, this is a preventive measure to make sure that as usage is increasing, that service is maintained at a particular level or within a particular range. Is that my understanding that?
Yes, that's correct. As I mentioned, our network engineers monitor the network for usage, and when they identified an area where additional boosting is needed, then they notify the network team, and we go out and identify what poles are available for additional facilities.
So basically, you're just trying to improve the service that's already provided. You're just trying to make sure that it's maintained at a certain level.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Other questions from members of the Board? Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a very quick question about pole attachments. We have some very crowded poles, and we may be doing some, well, we will be doing, additional work with our institutional network. We'll be creating a new fiber network for our institutional buildings. And I'm not sure if this pole would be implicated. I haven't been out to see the pole. But I guess the general question is, is this pole one of those very crowded poles? Is this the last space on the pole, or do we have some flexibility going forward with respect to this pole, additional pole attachments?
Well, there's, yeah, but there is certainly some room on the pole. There is obviously electricity on the pole already, but there certainly should be room for something else. I think you would need to coordinate with Eversource, because Eversource is also a co-owner of the pole with Verizon. But that's certainly something we could discuss with you.
I have two other questions, Ms. Foley, and then we'll see if there's any other member of the Board, or I mean, any member of the public who may have any questions. One is just, obviously, well, I shouldn't say obviously, but I think none of us are experts in things like radio frequency and radio waves. Is there someone on your team who could just speak to whether what is proposed for this pole can meet safety standards, those sorts of issues, is within the range of what you would see for a pole like this? And what adverse impacts may there be, if any?
Well, we don't anticipate any adverse effects from this small cell antenna. As you noted from our application package, one of the materials we included was an affidavit from a radio frequency engineer who confirmed that this particular size of antenna is well within the Federal Communications Commission's thresholds for RF emissions. So I don't anticipate any issues along that line. I would also ask our engineers or perhaps the site acquisition specialists if they have any other information regarding RF that they would like to add. Sean, I think you're on mute if you're trying to talk.
I was double muted. Thanks, Paula. Sure, I'm just going to add that, you know, like Paula was saying earlier, our network engineers are monitoring the network always. And if there's anything that went out of line that wasn't within FCC guidelines, would be at the possibility of losing our license, which is something that Verizon isn't willing to do. And these small cells operate well within FCC guidelines that are out there currently.
Okay, thank you. That's helpful. My second question is, the policy is really designed to address the issue that's been associated in the general literature and in the public with large boxes on poles for 5G technology and having some aesthetic, not to minimize any adverse aesthetic impact on residences that may be nearby or just the overall town. Is there, we have a picture which shows the equipment on the side of the pole, as well as two pieces of equipment near the top. Is there any way additionally that we could minimize the size of any of this equipment? Or are there any alternatives that would have a less visual impact than this one does?
Well, the antenna itself is actually quite small. The antenna goes on the top of the pole, and that's only 35 inches in height at the top of the pole. of the pole. Lower down on the pole, there is a radio unit and a meter. Unfortunately, those can't be any smaller, but to be honest, it's actually quite smaller than some other equipment that you've seen on utility poles in the area. For example, transformers that the electric company uses quite regularly are much larger than these attachments, as well as junction boxes and power supplies and other things. They're actually quite larger. So this particular pole attachment that we're proposing is quite small. And just as a point of information, it's not a 5G facility. It is a 4G. It is designed to support our 4G network, not 5G.
Okay. Thank you for that. That's helpful to know. I see Mr. Doyle and then Mr. Zawinski.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two quick questions. First, could you address the maintenance and replacement program that's associated with this unit? And then, secondly, whether or not there are any other zones in the town of Milton that you are keeping an eye on for such augmentation?
Well, I'll answer the second question and then turn the first question over to Sean, if you don't mind. We are, as I mentioned, the network engineers constantly monitor the network. There are at least two other possible locations within the town that we're currently looking at to determine whether or not additional augmentation would be helpful.
Thank you.
And Sean, would you like to talk about the maintenance issue?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Doyle. So yeah, the routine maintenance, maybe once every few months, generally, the tech doesn't need to go out to these sites once they're up and operational. Again, as Paula was saying earlier, if something came up and we had to go out and check the facility, we'd go out and look at it. But basically, once it's up there, the maintenance is very, is not really needed too much at all.
And upgrading over time?
Upgrading over time. If there was the need to upgrade, we would go out and upgrade it. It would be, you know, we would just go out there with our tech and a bucket truck and be able to maintain and fix anything within a day.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Doyle. Mr. Zawinski?
Thank you, Madam Chair. You all actually asked a lot of my questions, so thank you for being so on top of this issue. I just had a couple of quick comments and then a couple of quick questions, just kind of related to some of the aesthetic standards that are in the policy. First of all, I did distribute this application to the town engineer, the director of Public Works, and our wiring manager, who are all folks that have a hand in kind of the operations and whatnot of utilities. Did not receive any questions, comments, or concerns from any of those folks. The only kind of remotely kind of, you know, issue that was raised, and I think Mr. Zulus' question sort of alluded to this, but I'll ask it more directly. What sort of equipment is currently on the pole? Does the town have any equipment, whether it's police, fire, emergency, communications, anything? And is there going to have to be any equipment that's relocated or moved off of this pole?
I will start, and then Sean, if you could add. The pole has been, the original pole was replaced with a new pole. So it is, the existing pole is actually a little bit larger than the one that was there about previously. All of the equipment that was on the previous pole has been transferred to the new pole, except for the streetlight arm that was on the previous pole. So that is one piece, which I believe is under the jurisdiction of the town, to make that replacement. But we can certainly coordinate with the town on when and how that will occur.
We'll make sure, we'll want to stay on top of that. This, that your statement kind of get after another question that I had. My read of the plans kind of, talk a little bit more about the replacement pole, because it looks like the proposal is for the crossbar to be raised from the original condition. So has that already happened? Or, and if not, how is that going to happen? And how is that going to be mounted?
Yes, that has already happened.
Okay. That's good. Because I was wondering how you were going to swing that. But if it's an all-new pole, that makes total sense to me. The other two things that I think are, and again, this is just sort of my kind of, this is a new type of plan for me to read. One of the aesthetic standards in the policy is a prohibition of exposed wires. And I kind of saw that, you know, between the can kind of midway up the pole and up to the antenna, it looked like there were wires that were kind of connecting those two pieces of equipment. I don't know if you can kind of talk about how those pieces of equipment kind of communicate with each other? Are there exposed wires? And if so, is there a way to kind of cover those in some sort of conduit or something like that?
Yes, those should be covered in conduit. There should not be any exposed wires running up the side of the pole.
Okay. So it may just be a sort of a function of the drawing itself that it kind of looks like they're wired. They're just lines on the plan. So, you know, as long as those are kind of contained in some sort of conduit and they're not kind of flying all over the place, I think that meets the letter of the policy. And then the color of the components. I think our policy kind of, you know, says gray to gray-blue or something that matches the color of the pole. Can you talk a little bit about what the components look like?
Yes, our standard color for the equipment will be gray, will be light gray.
Yeah. I'm sorry.
I was just going to say, that is the color of the other existing facilities that are in Milton currently.
That all makes sense. Those were the questions that I had. You know, the application was complete. We did a review of that. Like I said, the other department heads didn't have any questions or comments aside from, you know, the status of the existing equipment. I think we'll want to double back on that streetlight and make sure that that gets back up, you know, in a way that makes sense. And just, you know, for the select board's, you know, knowledge, I think there's been a desire, you know, since this policy was implemented a few years ago, to kind of get this policy into zoning, similar to how we have, you know, wireless communication facility zoning that kind of goes through the design review committee. So I think that's something that, you know, is now on the planning board's radar. I can't speak for the planning board right now, but I anticipate that'll be something that we, you know, we want to get done, you know, possibly in time for a potential fall town meeting, if not, you know, for the next annual. I think the policy is a pretty good one, you know, but I think, you know, we are going to want to take a closer look at those aesthetic standards. No disrespect to Verizon. This is a very kind of workman-like, utilitarian kind of proposal. We may want to see if we can do something a little tighter from an aesthetic perspective, but all of the components of the policy are there, you know. So I think, you know, this is okay, you know, in my book, and I appreciate the responsiveness of Verizon. I kind of, I hope that their application sets a standard for everyone that wants to do these things. I don't know how many players there are out there, but it was a very, very neat and tidy and very clear application. So I want to thank them for that. So I don't have anything else unless you all have questions, but thanks for the time.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Zawinski. I want to open it up to the public to see if we have anyone here this evening who did want to ask a question. So we did, Mr. Zulus read into the record the email from Mr. Bowden at 20 Guile Road. Is there any member of the public who would like to ask a question at the public hearing? And if so, please raise your hand. If you're on the telephone, I believe, it's star nine to unmute. I see two telephone callers, so I see no hands raised. Give it a few more seconds.
I think it's star six, Madam Chair.
Star six, okay. If you're, okay, thank you then. If you're on the telephone, it is star six to raise your hand. And I see Carol Stalker's hand raised. Ms. Stalker? Why don't we move Ms. Stalker over to panelists and allow her an opportunity to ask a question? Good evening, Ms. Stalker. Can you hear us?
Unmute, unmute. Okay.
Okay, thank, could you give us your name and address for the record, Ms. Stalker? Thank you. Good evening.
Is this the citizen speak section?
No, this is about the small cell wireless application by Verizon.
Oh, well, then I don't want to speak. I'm waiting for citizen speak. I'm so sorry.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Is there any other member of the public then who would like to be heard on the application for the small cell wireless facility? And I see no hands raised. Ms. Stalker, if you could mute your line?
I'm so sorry.
Thank you very much. Okay, then do we have a motion to close? Is there any other question from any member of the board?
I'll make a motion to close the hearing, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. Do we have a second?
Second.
All in favor of closing the public hearing? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon? Yes. Okay, now we're into deliberation and any discussion, members of the board? I think we've had a lot of good questions asked tonight, a lot of good information. Mr. Zawinski indicated the application meets the criteria in the policy.
Madam Chair, will you be seeking a motion?
Yes. If there's no discussion, yes, we could entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion, Madam Chair, to approve the application by Verizon for the small cell facility on Guile Road.
Second.
Okay. And just for the record, it's Selco Partnership doing business as Verizon Wireless.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you.
Friendly.
Okay, great. Thank you. Any discussion on the motion? I'll just say, I echo a lot of what Tim Zawinski said in terms of the aesthetic, compliance with the aesthetic guidelines, and I think the public safety arguments here indicate we should approve this despite the residents' concerns. Any other discussion? Then we'll go to a vote. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. So the application is approved. Thank you all very much. We appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much.
And thank you. Have a good night. And thank you to Mr. Zawinski, who I know has to get over to the 40B hearing right after this meeting.
Good night.
Thank you, Madam Chair.
Good night, everyone. Thank you. The next item on our agenda is public comment. So we had Ms. Stalker. If there's anyone else for public comment, please raise your hand. We'll start with Ms. Stalker. And if you could give us your street address, Ms. Stalker?
Hi, I'm at 291 Hillside Street in Milton.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I spoke briefly to the board last week about tree planting. In Milton, we've had a very successful run of planting street trees, which has been my main focus for the last decade, is raising funds for trying to restore the tree canopy of shade trees. And you commended us, and we talked about how Milton had, and Ms. Conlon talked about how Milton had regained its Tree City status. And then after that, I think there was a vote about the mature trees on the Blue Hills Parkway, the Lamb's sister conservation land. And I wanted to come back and differentiate between the trees that we're planting and mature trees and say that planting new trees is not a substitute for cutting down mature trees. And often, in the 1950s, that's how people thought of it. You had to cut down a big tree for some reason, you planted a little tree, and in 50 years, that would be a big tree. And there's a lot of developers who still think that way, and that's the way it used to be. But that was before climate change. The Chicago Botanic Garden has recommended some of the trees that we've been planting is having a better chance of surviving the next 50 years of climate change. But small trees have small root systems, and they will not have as good a chance of surviving as mature trees, like the ones on the Lamb Conservation Land, which have large root systems. And the small trees that we are planting by enlarged numbers around town should not be seen as a substitute for cutting down these big trees on the Lamb Estate. Depending upon how climate change unfolds, every mature tree we cut down may prove to be irreplaceable. We need both new schools and conservation land with mature trees for our kids. The land may seem like it's free, but it comes at a cost. And the cost, because a large tree has its own microclimate, the cost will be higher, drier temperatures, fresh oxygen to breathe, instead of pollution. Wildlife, the white oaks on that property support 400 kinds of butterflies and moss. They support more wildlife than any other living thing in this region. Erosion control, soil enrichment. And the cost of these trees is our children's survival and quality of life. We keep talking about we're doing it for the kids. Well, don't poison the well of our children's future and then say they're doing it for the kids. We are leaving our children a degraded planet with a frightening climate change. They are going to need trees to help buffer the climate, and they're not going to say thank you for being so short-sighted as to cut down these trees to save some money. I'm just saying, please spend the money for another piece of land. The trees on this property include, they're like sequoias. They are huge. There's a red oak with a circumference of 135 inches. The diameter breast height is 36 inches. There are many white oaks, which are the most special of all trees that live in this region. There is shagbrock hickory, 80 inches circumference. There's beech trees. These are not trees that are found in the Blue Hills. This is a special and unique stand of the biggest trees in Milton. And when you talk about swapping it for swamp, that's like saying, let's swap this sequoia for an acre of swamp. It's not the same, because these trees are living things. They are not acres. It's not by the acre, it's by the tree. And each one of these trees, because of climate change, is irreplaceable. So I wanted to just differentiate between that and what we are doing with the tree planting along the streets, where we plant these little trees and we hope they survive. I don't know what their odds are going to be, but they're never going to be those big trees, because the climate will not allow it. And we need them. We need the big trees. And our kids need it. This is for the kids. They need the conservation land, and they need schools. I hope you can find another piece of land. So that's my statement.
Okay. Thank you very much, Ms. Stalker. Thank you for coming in this evening. I see no other hands raised. I'll just ask one more time, if there is anyone here for public comment, please raise your hand or star six to unmute and raise your hand on your phone. Okay, seeing none, then we will go on to the next agenda item. Thank you again, Ms. Stalker. The next item is a meeting with our auditors, Powers and Sullivan, regarding the FY21 financial statements. So we have, I think I saw Mr. Peacock in the attendee group. Can move him over. And if there is anyone else from the auditors, the audit from Powers and Sullivan who's here this evening, we will move them over as well. I see hands raised by Jess Green and Michael Sutfin. Are they members of Powers and Sullivan, the audit team?
Jess Green is a, thank you, Madam Chair. Jess Green is a member of Powers and Sullivan, and Michael is a member of the Towns Audit Committee.
Towns Audit Committee, I'm sorry. Thank you very, yes, that's right. We were going to have audit committee representatives. Don't know if there's anyone else from the audit committee here this evening. Why don't we move Mr. Sutfin over? All right. And while we're doing that, Mr. Peacock, we'll turn the floor over to you. We thank you for joining us tonight, and we do have a full agenda, so if we could try to move as expeditiously as we can through this item, we would appreciate that.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair.
Thank you. Welcome.
Board, thank you for having us. With me, as you have noticed, is Jessica Green, who was the manager on the job. For those of you who don't know, my name is Craig Peacock. I am the partner on the Towns Audit, here to discuss the 21 financial audit, which includes financial statements, a management letter, and a schedule of expenditure of federal award program. I would just like to preface this by saying we have met with the audit committee previously and, you know, discussed what I would call the details of the report. and, you know, discussed what I would call the details of the reports. So I plan on keeping it at a high level and then more than willing to, you know, answer any questions that the board might have. For '21, the town received an unmodified opinion on their financial statements, which is the best you can get. That is what you're looking for. Responses, I'd like to thank, you know, members of the various financial offices and such that we, and the school department that we work with, the retirement system as well. You know, everybody was very readily available to answer our questions, provide information. We're a little later this year than normal, but, you know, you also did have a 20-plus-year town accountant leave, and someone new come in and have to kind of get acclimated, figure things out, the closing and such. So, you know, we got a lot of good questions along the way. And in my opinion, I would not expect future audits to extend out to April. A couple of quick highlights. The town detected the budget for fiscal '21 saw the use of approximately $2 million of free cash and overlay to balance the budget. However, when we look at the actual operations, again, collections came in very strong again this year. They were approximately $2.3 million over budget. And turnbacks on the appropriation side were around 1.6 million. And that's mostly due to the fact that the town, as well as, you know, many communities in Massachusetts have received various COVID-related grants that both the schools and the town were able to utilize for some items that maybe were outside of the normal scope of the budget and/or maybe, you know, some items that might have typically been included in the So that actually freed up some dollars and, you know, in essence, with a million six dropping to the bottom line on a budgetary basis, the town ultimately didn't have to utilize the free cash, you know, assigned to the fiscal '21 budget. So, you know, great collection efforts have been ongoing. Unassigned fund balance, what we look at is moved from a 7.6% of expenditures in the previous year to almost 10%, just under 10% for fiscal '21. Now, I will preface by saying the unassigned balance for GASB purposes does include the town's stabilization funds. So, you know, that accounts for approximately $6 million of the 12.4 million of unassigned fund balance on the financials, but it does show that, you know, the town had an overall pretty good year. I think really, again, a lot of it has to do with the fact that there were other buckets of monies available that were able to be utilized during fiscal '21. And there'll be some going forward for the next couple of years until, you know, either the pandemic kind of subsides or the different federal dollars, you know, stop coming in, that type of thing. Some of the largest pieces that we normally talk about on the financials are two of the largest liabilities that we usually see, one being GASB '75, the other post-employment benefit liability, which had a large increase this year of about $36 million. The town for the last couple of years hasn't put in some extra money into the trust, which causes the actuary when doing their valuation to decrease the discount rate down to 2.5% this year. Decreasing discount rate has the impact of increasing the liability when, you know, when they go through their calculations. GASB '68 relates to the pension liability. And the pension system this year had a really good investment return year of almost $17.8 million, which drops right to the bottom line. And hence, when we saw the new valuation this year, there was about an $8.3 million decrease in the town's pension liability this year that got recorded. Again, trying to, when we look at a couple of the other reports, some of the important items to keep in mind is the town did not receive any material weaknesses or significant deficiencies, which is very important. You know, it means that most of the comments when we do look at, when the management letter, for instance, are what we would call more housekeeping in nature. Important enough that we feel they should be brought to the town's attention. But again, they did not rise to the level of you qualify our opinion on your reports. Again, that's the quick overview of the financials. The audit overall went pretty well. Again, an unmodified opinion, which is what you want, and great cooperation from the town finance personnel that we work with. And I can move right on and answer questions at the end if there happens to be any.
Why don't we see if there's any questions, at least on the financials or any comments? Many members of the board, and we are trying to move Mr. Sutfin over to panelists. So, Mr. Sutfin from the Audit Committee. We maybe have some technical difficulties with that. But any comments or questions from members of the board? Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't have questions. I was very glad to see the progress that was made on the management letter items from last year. I think we've made great progress, especially considering, you know, some of the difficulties of COVID. So I just wanted to thank staff and also our treasurer for working on those. Thank you.
And I think Mr. Peacock is going to just briefly review those for us next. The only thing I would add, Mr. Peacock, on the financial statements is that you're correct, we did borrow from stabilization, and you'll be, if you haven't already heard, you'll be pleased to know where we and the Warren Committee are recommending to town meeting that we restore the full million, and I believe it's $1,050,000, to the stabilization fund from free cash in the, at the May Town Meeting. So that is on our agenda, and we appreciate all your comments about the transition. It has been a period of three different town accountants in the last 15 months who have served in this role, which has delayed a little bit your presentation. Normally, you came in to meet with us in November timeframe. So we'll hopefully get back into that groove next year, but we appreciate all your patience and your work with with all the transition that has happened in the office. So thank you. Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Mr. Peacock, and all Mr. Sutfin. Mr. Peacock, I have a question about what you said about OPEB, the other post-employment benefits. You mentioned that because we hadn't put money in, there's a decrease in the discount rate, increase in the liability. What kind of, what kind of contribution would we need to make in order to have a material impact on the decrease in the discount rate? Or maybe to increase the discount rate so we have a lesser liability?
Well, when, what we do as a firm is we consult with, you know, the main actuaries that work with our clients throughout the state of Massachusetts. And currently, the town of Milton has a $288 million liability recorded in your financial statements. But your trust fund, you know, there are some clients that have not started one as of yet. So, but you do only have $1,006,000 in the trust fund at this point in time. So what actuaries are looking for is a consistent practice of putting money aside. At times, they're looking for communities to say that once our pension liability, which has a mandate to be funded, and once that's funded, that we will, as a community, will try to utilize that appropriation to now start funding the OPEB. Now, OPEB is not mandated to be funded currently, but we would expect at some point in the future there will be some sort of a mandate, clearly as the liabilities grow. But what an actuary does do is they, again, they look at your level of funding, they look at the assets, and they do various analysis of how long could the assets currently in the trust cover the benefits that are being paid out, you know, yearly to active employees, as well as retirees and such? And by only having $1,006,000 and then showing that the last couple of years, no new contributions have gone in, that in itself kind of requires them to go down a little bit on the discount rate. They would be looking for a management plan of an intent to fund the trust fund a little bit more, if you will.
Thank you.
Just to follow up on that point, Mr. Peacock, we are, Tom, our Warren Committee and our board and the town administrator are recommending, I believe it's $100,000, Ms. Fagan, for the OPEB account at the May Town Meeting for fiscal year '23. And it has been the plan for many, many years, but we can't say it often enough because there's always unions and departments who want to, you know, direct as much money to operating expenses. But when our pension plan is fully funded, the intent is to direct the difference in that amount to the OPEB liability so that we will have a more substantial contribution in future years. You know, boards turn over, employees turn over, so we have to keep repeating that so everybody understands that's been the the goal of the Warren Committee, the select boards, town leadership over the years. And I believe even the schools have been on board with that. So, or at least the former Assistant Superintendent understood that very well. So that's the game plan. Maybe it should be more formalized, as you said, in a management plan. Maybe that should be in a policy or in some kind of a written document, that that's the intent. Maybe the new board can take that up at some point soon.
Thank you, Madam Chair, for those comments. That makes a lot of sense. One, if I may, just one comment back, I would agree with you on a written policy. If the town boards and the various committees associated with OPEB and brings it up to the select board, and the town actually adopts a policy that the actuary can, lack of a better way to say it, hang their hat on, if you will, that the town's intent is to utilize the pension funding later on. They can do some different calculations, and as a result of the formalized plan, usually can then go ahead and, it may not make it up to a 6% discount rate, but they can certainly move higher than 2.5% and utilize the intent of the town in the future years.
That's very good to know. Thank you. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Actually, when we were members of the Finance Committee, that was one of the policies that we were going to propose. So I know the newer Finance Committee is going to be taking those up soon. And I think that's important to do, thank you.
Mr. Sutfin, if you have any comments on behalf of the Audit Committee, please feel free to weigh in, or if you want to wait until after we get to the management letter, I'll leave that up to you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'm happy to wait until the end of the management letter, and then I can share some comments.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. I'll move on to the management letter. The management letter had six comments that carried over from last year. And I'm happy to say that five of those six are considered fully resolved in fiscal '21. So that means that both your accounting office, your treasury, and various departments have worked together to, you know, establish certain reconciliations and both on various balance sheet accounts, cash accounts. I know that one of the, excuse me, the fire department was one of the last departments to get onto the PO system, and that has occurred. So a lot of, I'd have to say, a lot of progress did occur in '21 in cleaning up. The only outstanding one is related to some bank reconciliations. And, you know, I need to be clear on this one a little bit. I think the treasurer has been working relatively hard to try to make sure that they work with the retirement system, make sure those accounts, they've worked very hard on the tailings and got that comment resolved. I think what happens is when various departments make their own deposits, sometimes the information doesn't make it up to the treasurer's office as timely as it could. And when they're trying to reconcile their month-end bank accounts, they may not have all the detailed information that they need to pass over to the accounting to know how to post and deal with some of that. And, you know, their method in the past has been to say, we know this is timing. Let's just see it, that it cleaned itself out in the next month or so, which it should. I can say that we have never seen anything lingering from year to year. It does clear itself out, but auditors want the detail, and we want to be able to, you know, isolate and understand reconciling items. And hence why we've asked and tried to work with treasury to add a little bit more detail to the reconciliations. But I will say, for the board's own comfort level, that the variances that we come up with in some of the recons that maybe are not fully substantiated because they're deemed timing issues are not in totality material to the town. They will not misrepresent the town's financial statements. It's more of an internal control. You know, we all reconcile our own personal bank accounts. And, you know, I'm an accountant, I'm an auditor, I like to get to the penny. And so, you know, we're just, we look for the detail. And so we're recommending, you know, that kind of the detail level get maybe brought up a little bit type of thing. But that, other than that, all comments in the management letter were fully resolved this year, which was really an outstanding year for the town as far as the management letter goes. That's really what we have in the management letter, and it leads to one last report, the Schedule of Expenditures, which is relatively quick. What that report does is report the federal dollars that the town has expended in that, in the particular fiscal year, this being fiscal '21. We would show that there's about $7.5 million on this town's federal report this year, which is up from 2.6 in the previous fiscal year. And that is all due to the various COVID-related federal grants that the town received. There was, you know, there's various school lunge, there's the Coronavirus Relief Fund, CARES Act, school emergency ESER funds. So from many departments, the school department utilized the COVID monies, which is, quite frankly, what we've seen across the state of Massachusetts over the last year or two. Again, the town received an unmodified opinion. We were required to, excuse me, look at both the child nutrition cluster and the Coronavirus Relief Fund as what we would refer to as major grants, so that we have to look at the town's handling of those funds, the compliance with federal regulations. And I'm happy to report that we did not have any findings or have any discrepancies in what we were hoping to see based on the federal guidelines. And the town did receive an unmodified opinion on that report. So that would be what you'd be looking for.
Thank you very much, Mr. Peacock. Any other comments or questions? For the audit team, or for the Audit Committee, or Mr. Sutfin, is there anything you would like to add?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a few comments. Certainly sincerely appreciate the service from, you know, Powers and Sullivan. Mr. Peacock and Ms. Green have served us for a number of years. And with the transition of the town accountant, you know, they were, you know, patient with us and really did a great job helping us get through the audit. We also had a transition at the Audit Committee. Kathy White had served us for many years, a distinguished service to the town, and stepped down, but we appreciated her service and added a couple of new Audit Committee members. On the management letter, agreed, the one that remains open, that has been an open comment now for a number of years. And we talked about that quite a bit at the committee. We agree with Mr. Peacock's comments in terms of the materiality. It's, you know, we are collectively comfortable, the town financial statements are fairly stated. In my view, one of the root causes to this is we, as a town, we do our best to offer our residents multiple ways to make payments and through many channels, right? There's a lot of access points to pay money into the town. And because of all those access points, you know, there's a lot on a given day, week, or month that can remain open or uncleared through banks. And so aspirationally, I would love to see us over time transition to narrowing those collection points and becoming more automated. We did talk with the Audit Team that we are seeing other towns across the state get to more automated payment functions for, you know, different get to more automated payment functions for, you know, different, different bills that, that town residents may have to pay or different taxes. And I think over time, that will help to reduce the risk of, you know, cash accounts that we're struggling to reconcile.
Thank you, Mr. Sutphen. And I'd like to thank in particular Treasurer Jim McCullough for all of the work that he did to address some of these issues. And I think probably former town administrator, Mr. Dennehy, and also Ms. Praval and, and others who worked in the various departments that were involved with treasurer's office and, and some of these issues. So thank them all for their hard work resolving the prior year comments. Thank you also to the audit team again for your patience with us this year and for all of your help and assistance that you provide to the financial operations staff of the town. Is there anyone else who has a question or a comment this evening? Ms. Fagan, if you have anything, or Ms. Praval, I don't believe is here this evening. So any, anyone else, any member of the board?
Madam Chair, are you, are you looking from, oh, sorry, am I?
No, no, go ahead, Richard. I, I don't think we need a motion.
I didn't, I don't see a motion. That's gonna say, I don't, it doesn't look like it needs a motion.
Did you have something, Ms. Fagan?
No, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you. All right then, Mr. Peacock and Ms. Green, thank you. Mr. Sutphen, thank you to the audit committee for all of your efforts.
Madam Chair, members of the board, thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
Have a good evening. All right, the next item on our agenda is the, a final report from the Equity and Justice for All Committee. I see several members of the committee in our attendee group. So if we could move them over, we have Patricia Lattimore, who's the chair of the, co-chair of the committee. I see Mr. Miller, Ms. Ward, Ms. Lucas. And then maybe if there's anyone else. Karen, then, then maybe Karen Gross who we're in. Good evening. Ms. Stalker, if you, we'll move Ms. Stalker back to attendee, but Ms. Stalker, if you could turn your computer on to mute. We've got some background noise coming on. Thank you. Okay, and, and we could move Ms. Stalker back to the attendee group, if you can. All right. Ms. Lattimore and members of the Equity and Justice for All Committee, thank you for, for your patience, first of all, this evening. Thank you for waiting. And if we have anyone else in the attendee group, we will move them over if they should be here for this agenda. So welcome and thank you for coming in and thank you for your report.
Thank you. Thank you for setting up this committee to do this report. We were very pleased that the town had shown such a commitment to diversity, equity, and inclusion.
Well, we thank you all for your hard work and your efforts. Would you like to give a summary of the report? Is there, or would you rather just open it up to any questions or comments from the committee, from members of our board, or we've all had an opportunity to review it. We've had it for a few weeks and it's a very thorough report, very lengthy. So we appreciate all the effort that went into the report and all the exhibits and attachments that you provided with us.
Well, thank you. I can give like a very brief summary of the report. The first thing, I think that as we've reported in previous meetings, the committee concentrated its efforts in four areas. We looked at town government, affordable housing, school, youth and families, and police and fire. And we came up with a number of recommendations, very specific to all of those, to each of those areas. But in general, we came up with some key observations that we felt really were consistent across all of the areas that we looked at. And we've mentioned many of these before. We talked about the town being a little bit out of, out of step with maybe a number of other town, cities, or any even public and private organizations without having a diversity policy in place. And we're very pleased that this committee has done, has gone through the readings for diversity and equity and inclusion policy. And so we think that that is one of the pieces that's going to serve us well in the future. And the other pieces that we looked at, in, in that document that will be the DEI policy, we thought that, you know, we, we were very concerned about some of the issues around staffing in the town, including in the police and fire department. And we actually tried to look at a couple of those things and decide, and there were some structural reasons why we could not actually move forward with them, including that the state itself was issuing a report, which it has done recently on reforming the whole civil service practices for the state. And so, but we thought that there are some things that we hope that the town will pay attention to putting together more policies in place that will encourage all of the town departments to diversify. And once again, this committee has been very helpful with us in terms of kicking off a process with the town staff to do an assessment of how it implements diversity across all of the policies. And as this committee has done, has hired a consultant to actually lead that process and help the town to develop a strategy. So we really are very grateful to the committee, to the select board for putting together a lot of, in place a lot of the practices that we've, and changes that we've recommended. We did a lot of, we were also pleased that, you know, one of our major issues was that although our work for this committee was only eighteen months, that the work needed to continue. And so once again, we're very thankful that the select board has seen, has had the wisdom to put in place a permanent committee. And we hope to see that committee staff shortly. And we're, of course, very interested in helping that committee to kick off and to continue this work. So we have a lot of people that we'd like to thank. But first and foremost, the select board, the members, all of you have been extraordinarily supportive and helpful to us. We have had great support and we absolutely appreciate that from you. We also had good support from all of the town departments. We found open doors to talk to people, whether they were department heads or staff members. We did go through a lot of the policies of the town. And as you can imagine, that's a great bit of work and we know that that work will have to be done in subsequent months. And the consultant that's hired will help the town to walk through a lot of those. But we also, and we're grateful also to, you know, the school department that, even though it's not under the select board's auspices, the school superintendent, Jett, it was open to a lot of discussions with us as well as his staff. And we actually were very appreciative of the work that they've been doing separately from the rest of the town in terms of supporting diversity, equity, and inclusion for their staff and for the students of Milton. We have a number of recommendations in our report that we, we think add to those. And so we're, but we are very grateful for the work that they've done. We're, lastly, I would say that we are very grateful also to the, the citizens in Milton. Because as you know, we did a survey. We think we got a pretty good return based upon what we see from other towns. You know, there were over six hundred people who responded to the survey. And we were very grateful and that gave us a good basis of information to work through. So we really appreciate all of the support that we've gotten, both from the committees of the town, you know, parks and rec, commissioners, as well as many, many others that I'm not going to remember at this point. But in particular, we are grateful and we think that hopefully you will find this report helpful and will turn, now I can guess I'll turn it over to you, any questions you may have had, since as you said, it's a pretty lengthy report. A lot of it is appendices, so hopefully not as bad as it looks.
All right. Well, thank you very much for that. I'll, I'll call it an executive summary. It's a high-level overview and we appreciate that, as well as all of the work that went into the report. Does any member of the board have any questions or comments this evening? And we'll also give an opportunity to the other committee members who are here if they would like to add anything. Any member of the board?
Madam Chair?
Yes, Mr. Wells.
I, I just want to thank Pat and her committee. And, and just for the purpose of discussion, I'll make a motion to accept the final report of the committee.
I'll second.
Okay, we have a motion made and seconded. Any discussion on the motion to accept the report, the final report?
I'll just say, Madam Chair, if I may, that it was extraordinarily professional, thorough, and visionary. I want to compliment everybody who contributed to it, both those present and well beyond, those audiences that you enumerated.
I, I agree, Mr. Oh, Mr. Zulus.
I, I was just gonna ask, Madam Chair, do, do we want to have the, are we gonna have the vote and then have some further discussion of the report after that, or should?
Sure, we can do that. We could do it either way. What, if, why don't, why don't we take a vote, then we can have further discussion? All right, let's, let's have a vote then. Again, the motion was to accept the final report of the Equity and Justice for All Committee. Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, further comments? Were, were you raising your hand for something else, Mr. Zulus, or was it for the?
He's trying, he's trying.
Okay.
That was it. No, that was it.
All right. Well, yeah, I, I guess the only thing that I would add is.
Do, do you want me to talk now? Katie, do you want, do you want me to wait?
Sure, go, why don't you go right ahead?
Okay, sorry, sorry, sorry for the confusion. I'm, I'm having trouble with my, my trigger hand and the raised hand, my trigger finger and the raised hand. So thank you all for the report. So I, I just want to, just want to make sure I under, I understand a few things in terms of the go-forward here. It appears from the key recommendations that we've at least got to start on the high-level recommendations for the town side, the creation of the policy, the standing committee, and the DEI consultant. But if we go further in, it seems like there are a lot of sub-goals for the town, town government that we need to, we have a lot of work to do on. I mean, there are a couple of high-level goals, but then there are about, you know, eight, eight more sub-goals for town and city government. And then, you know, within that, you know, three or four sub-sub-goals. So it, so I, 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 I guess the question is, is who's gonna drive that, right, beyond this board? I mean, this board needs to drive it. We've made a commitment, I made a commitment to some members of you back in the summer of two thousand and twenty, including Mr. Miller, that this wouldn't sit on the shelf, that we would, that we would drive this as it went forward. And so, so it, it, it seems to me that the committee going forward is going to drive those sub-goals. And, and, and is that consistent with, with, with your committee's view?
That is consistent with our committee's view. As I said, we recognize that we really scraped the surface of this. This is ongoing work. And so we hope that the future committee, which we hope will get appointed within the, you know, first few months of the, once the new board is set, we hope that they will take on this. And as I said, we stand ready to help to transition them and to explain our report. But that is who we think will be the point person. And I think I see Lisa Ward raising her hand.
Yeah, I just wanted to say that also when you were saying main and then subgroups and then subgroup group, I think it's also good if we're mindful that there's a lot of intersectionality in this, that it has to be a whole town's endeavor and that things sort of interweave with one another. And that does take time. And so it is just, you know, I would agree with Pat that it's just wonderful that you had us do this work for eighteen months just to get it, get her going. And there's a real earnestness to do this, but it's kind of an all, all hands in.
Yeah, and I, I just wanted to say, so thanks, Mr. Zulus, for bringing up that conversation we had now twenty months ago around, you know, all this work really only matters if there's action. And that really starts at the top. That's the select board, obviously, town adminis, the town administrator. It can't just sit within the committee that's going to continue to move forward. Because as Lisa highlighted, there is so much intersectionality across the town, across the different areas that we've talked about, that we really need leadership within the town, helping to work together with the committee to drive things forward. And I think, you know, Pat gave a shout out to Parks and Rec. I sat on the Youth and Education and Sports Committee, and we presented them with fifteen ideas of our own, just in that one committee. In fairness, I think there's thirty-three pages of recommendation and then fifty pages of appendix. So to your point, there's a whole host of ideas. And it was great to see one town group like Parks and Rec literally grab onto it and start to make immediate change. And they did some amazing things in a short amount of time. And so the best thing that I would say that I got out of this, not that you ask, but was the fact that there is a lot of passion and will and desire across the town to improve this great community. So it's been a pleasure serving on this committee.
Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, and thank you for that. And, and just a couple of other thoughts, just to follow up. The two other big areas that you made for overall recommendations were affordable housing and, and, and youth sports. And you mentioned, Quincy, the, the, you know, driving that through the parks commissioners. And I understand the intersectionality, but I, but I really think that, you know, someone or some group needs to drive certain things to, you know, and maybe coordinate it, but, but it, so it seems to me that the affordable housing recommendations, maybe that sits with our new, more robust affordable housing trust to, to drive that. The, you mentioned Parks, Parks and Recs for the sports. There are a number of recommendations here for the schools. So it seems to me we, we need to, we need to bring in the school committee on that and, and make sure that this, I don't know if it's a joint meeting with them or it's publishing this to them. And then finally, a number of recommendations on police and fire. And I think, you know, just, just, just my visceral thought to that is that really sits with, I think, with this board. There, there's really no other place, it seems to me, where, where those recommendations would sit other, in, in order to be driven, other than with this board. So thank you for, and, and please correct me if I'm wrong about all, any of those thoughts, or if you have additional thoughts of how to drive them. I will, I will observe that I thought the, the survey results were powerful and long-lasting, and those are things that we can use and cite for, for the short term and the long term going forward. So, so I think, you know, there's a lot of powerful things in here, but I thought the survey results are gonna have a real long-term effect as we, as we go forward. So thank you for that.
So, Mr. Zulus, thank you also for bringing up the survey results. I see Janelle Lucas, who was one of the members that pushed the survey forward. And actually, in a group like ours where you say we should have a survey, you end up doing the work. And so Janelle with Alva Guerrero and, and Chris Hart actually did a lot of heavy lifting on that. And so we really owe them a great deal of, thanks for that. But just a quick thing on the civil service piece, although we did do a punt on that. We do think that one of our recommendations is that a subcommittee that is a specialized committee gets created to look at the whole issue of civil service. Clearly, you know, with so many moving parts at both the state and the town level, that's one that really requires an expertise that we felt that we did not have. And so we do make a recommendation there to say that for the select board, you, that we recommend that you appoint a committee made up of people who could actually help to move this forward. So thank you.
Okay, let's go to Ms. Collins and Mr. Wells, and then I have some comments also. Ms. Collins? I, I'm sorry, Mr. Zulus, were you finished before I move on? Okay, Ms. Collins?
I'm done, sorry.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I, I, I wanted to also say that the survey I found very powerful. And it made me look forward to that annual, or at least annual. and it made me look forward to that annual, or at least annual, reporting that we'll have. I think, Ms. Latimore, when your group started, your committee started its work, you mentioned that just knowing that we have a report to produce will actually help us, you know, direct our attention to diversity, equity, and inclusion. And I would add belonging, because I think that's the most important thing in a community, that everybody belongs. So, I'm really looking forward to that and the power of that. And as far as housing, the planning board really is, a lot of this work sits with the planning board. So, I'm wondering if, you know, I'm not sure whether the Select Board should be delivering this or it should be a combination of the Equity and Justice for All Advisory Committee and the Select Board. But I think it is important for them to directly interact with this information and really engage with it. And as far as civil service, I did meet with the Civil Service Group a few times because I was on the MMA's Personnel and Labor Relations Committee, learning, not an expert by any measure, but learning a lot. And I thought that they were doing a great job of tracking all the hearings and following the issue. And that, you know, the recommendation at the end of the day, I really didn't feel it was a punt. I thought that it was well-reasoned and actually gives us some traction to move forward, like a lot of the other recommendations. So, I thank every group, and I was very excited to hear about already the immediate movement on sports. So, thank you for highlighting that as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Wells? Mr. Wells, you're on mute.
I got it, I got it. I always go to put my hand down first, Madam Chair, that's the most important thing, I don't want you coming back to me. I don't want to belabor it, I just, one of the things, I follow this very closely, is the members know I'm very involved in the police training and the Commonwealth now, following my police career. And Pat, as you know, Milton is one of only three communities in the Commonwealth that since 1985, by statute, has been afforded the ability to have a police cadet program, which has been one of the biggest diversity tools. I mean, the difficulty, as you know, that we have is we sit right next to the city of Boston, who pays significantly higher, and we lose many of our very qualified officers of many diversities who've been here. And I could go on for an hour on this, but that is one tool that I really don't want to see us lose, and that's one of the dangers. The good thing is that on a statewide level, the state is starting to look at this as a tool for all communities. Because it begins with kids at the high school level, at the college age, and recruiting them into this profession, because we currently have a time in policing where who wants to be a cop? It's very true. It's very difficult to recruit in policing right now. And so, that is one tool I don't want to see us lose. That's a very, very important tool for this community.
Janelle, do you have any comment on that?
Thank you, Pat. No, I don't. I just think that it's a very complicated issue, and I do hope that we can continue to maintain and move forward with that.
I'm good, Pat. I mean, I date all the way back to prior Chief Wells, Chief Murray, and myself, and currently Chief King. You know, diversification and making the police department reflective of the community, something that is a priority on every chief's radar. Maintaining, recruiting them and maintaining them is the difficulty. That's the real difficulty here.
And that's unfortunately an issue across the Commonwealth and what the Commonwealth was also looking at.
Our very first cadet of color, Essex Road graduate of Milton High, is one of the highest-ranking members of the Boston Police Department, Victor Robbins. We just couldn't afford to pay him. He makes more money now. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. And thank you all again for your work. It's not easy, we get that.
Thank you, Mr. Wells. I'll just briefly add, I don't want to repeat too much of what's already been said, but I do really think it's worth reiterating the point about we don't want the report to sit on the shelf. I view this in some ways as similar to the master plan, when we went through a long process. We had a committee that worked on the master plan, town meeting, planning boards, like we're all approved it. And that was in 2015, and then shortly after that, we got the implementation committee in place. So, having the permanent committee appointed, and as Mr. Zulus indicated, probably that would be somewhat akin to the master plan implementation committee that's going to move a lot of the different ideas forward. But even, we know the MPIC, you know, Arthur is our representative on the MPIC, and we have Cheryl Togayis from the Planning Board, who is also a member of the MPIC. Whether we need to appoint members of boards to the new committee, you know, maybe not. There are arguments too for not having Select Board or Planning Board members on, serving on too many committees. But I think this is gonna be an ongoing need for the board and the committee to be meeting frequently and working together and working in conjunction to advance the goals. So, I'm hoping we can use a model like that. And as for the housing recommendation, I do think that Affordable Housing Trust is probably the right place to have the recommendations in this report at least reviewed. The Planning Board certainly has a role too, as Ms. Collins said, and we should get the report over to the Planning Board. I've now been appointed at our last meeting as a resident member of the Affordable Housing Trust, effective as of the election. So, my plan would be to share this report with the other members of the committee. And I think Suzanne Bridges of our office recently notified both you, Ms. Latimore and Mr. Hart, that we have a couple of openings. We are going to appoint, we have on our agenda tonight, assuming the board votes it, to appoint Donia Raphael, who is a member of the Housing Committee, to the Affordable Housing Trust. But that still leaves us with two additional open seats. So, I think that's an opportunity for some additional work to be done to follow up some of the goals that are in your report. And just by way of an update, we did not have on our agenda tonight the DEI policy because it's still under review by town council. According to what I've, my understanding is, I believe it's gone out to other department heads for review. And that part may be completed, but this is a time of year where town council's primary focus is on town meeting and the budget and some other things that are time-sensitive. So, we will follow up and see if there are any comments, but I assume that that will be on the agenda of the new board fairly soon after the election. So, that's to come. But the reason it's not on tonight is it was still under review by at least town council, possibly others. But thank you for all the work again, and thank you for all the contributions and for all of your time this evening. I see Mr. Zulus' hand raised.
Madam Chair, I'm sorry, I just noticed that Ms. Gross-Horan and Ms. Champion are in the attendees. I'm not sure if they wanted to say anything or if they were gonna be moved up before we left. I just noticed, just so we might just, they may not want to, they may not have nothing to add, but just to give them the opportunity.
If they would, if they would please raise their hands, or Lynn, if you could move over, Linda Champion and Karen Gross-Horian, give them an opportunity to speak if they would like. And if not, we'll move them up so we can thank them for their contributions, the committee. We have Karen's hand raised, but we need to move her over as well. Okay, great, thank you. So, Ms. Gross-Horian and Ms. Champion, if you have anything that you'd like to add to the report, please feel free.
Yeah, this is Karen. I don't want to add anything. I just want to, you know, hearken thanks and just celebrate, you know, the steps that the Select Board took, you know, when Mike asked Courageous Conversations to come and do a board presentation back when we were in, you know, May of 2020, and this was one of my suggestions. And I just want to thank you for listening, for reaching out, and for understanding the importance of the work that a commission like this could do for Milton. And I'm just really pleased and proud to have worked with this incredible team of residents and citizens that care so much about Milton.
Thank you, Ms. Champion?
Madam Chair, thank you. I just wanted to say the same thing. I'm very appreciative of the fact that I had an opportunity to actually meet my Milton neighbors. I'm almost embarrassed to say I've been in Milton over 20 years and realized through this committee, I actually didn't know a lot of people in town. Because, you know, we get so bogged down with just raising our families and trying to maintain the spaces that we're in. But this was a great opportunity to give me a chance to meet others, and I'm so proud of the committee. I'm actually very proud of the Select Board for even taking this step. And I understand that, you know, change is hard for some people, but I think that everybody's working towards a common goal, and that's just to have a wonderful town to live in.
Well, and on that note, it's a good endorsement for volunteer service on town boards and committees. We're always looking for more of them. It is certainly a great way to meet a lot of people in town. So, I'm glad you mentioned that, because we're always trying to diversify the boards and add new voices to the board. So, thank you. Is there anything else on this topic from anyone this evening, and a member of the committee or a member of the board?
The only thing I'd like to just add, and I've said this before publicly, but this committee was a hard-working committee. It was a committee of 11 folks and that the Select Board pulled together through volunteers and sometimes volunteer maybe. So, but everybody worked hard. I would say one of the things that it has been a joy to be of service to the town, but it's also been great to work with this particular committee. This committee, for a lot of months, met every other week for an hour and a half every week. And then there was work that was done in between. So, I'd like to thank all of the members of the committee for the work that they've done, you know, rather was pulling together the survey, going to meetings, you know, the Affordable Housing Trust, you know, numerous meetings with town sports folks, meeting with the police department, the fire department. It's been a lot of work, and I've said that this has been a great group of people to work with. So, and thank you once again to the committee, the board, for pulling us together. And I see Janelle has her hand up.
Yes, thank you, Pat. I just wanted to add my thanks to the Select Board as well. And Pat said that we were a hard-working committee, and we were, but I also want to say that the co-chairs of this committee were the hardest-working people on the committee. So, thank you, Pat and Chris, so much for your leadership. It really helped to sustain us and move us through this process. So, thank you.
Thank you all. Certainly, it was a very, very good committee, made up of a lot of very caring people who are dedicated to moving the ball forward here. So, we appreciate all of your efforts. Well, thank you this evening, and thanks for your patience while we went through a number of other items.
No, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll follow up on the next steps very soon.
We will. Thank you very much.
All right, thank you. Have a good evening. Bye-bye.
Bye, thank you.
We are now on to item seven, which is COVID-19 update. We have Caroline Cancela, our Public Health Director here. Why don't we move the moderator, Bob Hislop, as well, because Bob may be interested in this topic. It does relate somewhat to the annual town meeting, and we had an initial conversation about that. We may have some follow-up this evening. We'll start with Caroline Cancela when she moves over. Good evening, Ms. Cancela and Mr. Hislop.
Good evening, Madam Chair.
Thank you for joining us tonight. So, we have this on really for an update, and thank you for your time and your willingness to come in tonight, talk about COVID-19, which has not been on our agenda for a little while now. And now is back, because we're seeing some numbers coming back up. Is there any general update that you'd like to give to us, and to the residents?
Yes, I have a short update. So, right now, the Health Department is observing a slight increase in lab-confirmed cases. Sunday, we had two cases. These are lab-confirmed, Monday four, Tuesday eight, and Wednesday six. Presently, the 14-day percent positivity in Milton is 2.9%. It's up from last week, which was 2.54%. 79 residents tested COVID-positive out of 2,917 tests administered in the last two weeks. We're seeing most Milton cases between the ages of 20 and 39, mirroring the state. Milton Public Schools had 40 students and four staff over the last week test positive by antigen tests. And we don't see those antigen tests, those are being done at home, so they're never even coming into our system. We're observing breakthrough cases of fully vaccinated and boosted residents, but predominantly, we're seeing mild to moderate symptoms reported in vaccinated individuals. And the Health Department will only be administering the second booster journey of vaccines to homebound residents. And residents may seek vaccines at local pharmacies, the second booster at community health centers. And the Health Department is continuing to contact raised children. And again, the confirmed lab tests in schools, preschools, childcare settings, and clusters, and as per the state. And that's my report.
Okay, well, thank you for that. Very, very important details. Anyone have any questions for Ms. Cancela? Okay, then Caroline, if you wouldn't mind, it might make sense you'd stick around at least for the first part of the next item, which is the annual town meeting coming up in May, but I see no Mr. Doyle's hand raised. Mr. Doyle? Mr. Doyle, you're on mute.
Caroline, thank you for the update. I was curious as to whether or not there are any modeling projections to which you have access that forecasts out what we might be seeing over the course of the summer and into the fall.
Yeah, I'm keeping an eye on the wastewater to see where that's going, because we are getting that data before. We're getting kind of a little bit of lag with the state on their data, about two weeks behind. But I anticipate that now with the holidays coming and school vacation, that the cases will rise. The variant that we're seeing right now is the Omicron BA2 variant, which is more transmissible, even though they are seeing milder cases, milder symptoms in cases, or maybe people are not presenting with cases at all. I mean, cases without symptoms at all. So, I do believe that, you know, I'm seeing only the lab-generated cases, and there's like an undercurrent of cases that are happening that unless people are testing with the antigen test or have any kind of symptoms, that, you know, it's happening in the community.
If I may, what is the current recommended incubation period for the people who do test positive?
So, you could be incubating it for two days before symptoms start. So, if you've been in contact with someone, the recommendation is to look back two days. And then, if you test positive, it's 10 days of isolation. They shortened it a little bit to say five days of isolation with a mask. You could, if you're feeling good by the sixth day, the temperatures, you don't have any temperature, you could go out with a mask up to day 10 and then take the mask off on day 11. So, we're always looking at the regulations, because they're always changing. And even from state regulations to school regulations, CDC regulations, and daycare regulations, there's a slight variation in all of those, and I have to keep on going back to mass.gov and continue to listening to the state calls every week to find out exactly what's happening.
Very helpful, but probably an uptick after the school vacation returns.
I would suspect that, and with people gathering around the holidays, yeah.
Bring us into the first of May. Okay, thank you.
All right, and with that, then why don't we talk about the town meeting? Oh, all right, Mr. Wells?
Just a quick question. Good evening, Caroline. Good to see you again. Congratulations on your daughter graduating from the police academy and journeying the ranks of the Milton Police Department. Ladies truly rule the roost over there these days. They are increasing numbers constantly. But just two, and I didn't, I just stepped away for a sec. I think I heard you say, I listened to this morning's report, hospitalizations have not increased, they're kind of staying the same?
Yeah, I...
On this, go ahead, I'm sorry, I'm gonna cut you off.
I reached out to BID Milton Hospital, Missy is my contact there, and she's left BID. I'm trying to get in touch with Alec Campbell over there for infection control, and he wasn't able to give me a report. But I haven't heard anything about what's happening up at the hospital.
Yeah, I was listening after this morning that this current virus's bearing is increasing, but the hospitalizations have stayed stagnant, which I think is a good thing.
I agree. I agree. I have heard that, that it's milder symptoms and that people are not being hospitalized at the high rates that they were previously. And then there's a lot more treatments now. And then there's a lot more treatments now that we have in our toolkit.
That was part two of the presentation. So, thank you and thanks for all your hard work. Like a president who never becomes a wartime president, you never expected to become a wartime public health director, but you did. So, it's everyone, all of your staff, everyone. So, thank you. Madam Chair, that said, I give it back. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Then I think we can move on now to item eight, which is the town meeting. And we have the moderator, Bob Hislop, with us. And we talked at our last meeting about some logistical arrangements and what Mr. Hislop's thoughts might be on how we're going to hold this town meeting in person. We all shared some ideas. So, why don't I ask Mr. Hislop to let us know if he's had any further thoughts on this or ideas that he wants to share with us?
If I could, I think I got screen share here. I was able to meet with the committee that's been helping me plan all the most recent meetings. And we went through and evaluated five different options. Let me just display what those are and a, and a recommendation at this point. So, I think I rattled some of these off last week, but we looked at a location, the ability of Milton Cable Access to be able to broadcast, what kind of precautions can we put in place? The reliability and, and technical risk and the concept of citizens, you know, limiting it to just town meeting members. And you can read the chart, but high school auditorium, we all know it well. But a couple of things I talked to Bill Ritchie about, he said we've got a pretty high quality air filter in the high school auditorium, the main one up in the ceiling. And he said he can produce five, maybe six portable air filters inside the room itself. Another idea that some towns are implementing, they're calling it a mask island or a zone. So, for example, if certain members only feel comfortable sitting with people with masks, we could create one or two zones inside the auditorium for people to sit who are in a want-to-mask-only or not mingle with folks who are without masks. So, I think we could implement that precaution. We know it's highly reliable, highly reliable, no weather risk. One thing I'd like to do is limited to only town meeting members or those who wish, citizens who wish to speak, so we can maximize the opportunity. I think Mr. Wells said it sees about 700. And if we get 250 in there, because we don't like to get 265 on a good night, let's say 250, that would provide ample opportunity, I think, for folks to spread out some. We looked at some others. High school auditorium with overflow. The challenge is the cable access team said they can't broadcast inside the high school like that in two places. They don't have the physical equipment. So, we'd have the broadcast occurring in the main room. We might be able to work up a microphone system in an overflow room, but they wouldn't be part of the cable access. There would be lag for the people in the room. Apparently, there's about a 45-second lag on the cable broadcast. The fastest one they have is about seven seconds. So, we could do it. We still have main air filters, you know, portable air filters in the main auditorium. There's no weather risk. There's just the increased technical risk. We'd have to work out some kinks on this. I'd still like to, if we went that option, eliminate citizens in order to make room for as many meeting members as possible. I looked at the field house. They said they just don't have the broadcast capability at all. So, we'd really be kind of just have a literally in-person without the benefit of the full broadcast capability they have. And the idea we talked about last week is a partially indoor-outdoor model, where some other towns have done this, you know, if you don't want to be inside, you could sit outside and then come to one of the open doors and we could have a microphone there and speak. That does increase the weather risk. It could be pouring rain for the people outside and that's defeating the purpose of it. I think the citizens could come because it's a big open space. Brooks Field, they said their other challenge is broadcast and the, and the big screen and the communication would be, they said, difficult for them. They're really trying to dissuade me from trying to pull that off. Plus, I think the board said a daytime meeting like on a Saturday might be problematic for a lot of members. So, we'd be at night and it can get, stay cold in, in May and possible rain. And then, of course, Zoom webinar we can do. I just wanted to remind the folks, I checked with the town clerk and we've consistently had about 50 members who just don't show up to our Zoom webinars now, for whatever reason, after all the encouragement we've, we've tried to do. And yet, she has said on a first night of town meeting, the old town meeting will typically get 260, 265. That only misses about 20 members. So, we have a net loss of about 50, you know, 30 people when we go to the Zoom meeting. So, I've done my own COVID research, looking at the numbers. It's interesting to hear Ms. Cincella talk about hers. My advice is let's go implement the protocols we can inside the high school auditorium. And if we get two weeks out and things are bad, I've talked to our team and we can flip a switch if it's an emergency and revert back to an all Zoom meeting if we see that it really looks like it's a dangerous COVID spike reoccurring. That's, that's our team's analysis.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Hislop. Does anyone have any comments or questions for Mr. Hislop? I see Mr. Wells and Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Can we take down that screen share? I just can't see anybody. Or did I do something? Maybe I did this. I don't know. Okay, thanks, Bob. So, my first question is, what is your preference on this? Is it the first one?
Yeah, the high, the high school auditorium with the mask islands and the extra air filtration inside and limiting to just town meeting members, no citizens.
So, I would ask you, just from a public safety point, I think it might be prudent of you to have like a conversation with Lieutenant Caputo, who handles all our, and on those side doors, he could probably erect two tents, couple of tents, where you could probably at least put 20 chairs, 25, at least 25 chairs out there. And to your point with those, the, have a, have a microphone there as well for those who don't want to come in. And that also increases the airflow through the room and the inside thing, depending on what's closed. But that's, I know that's not a capability that would probably be on your radar screen right away. But as you discussed this, that was like a no-win, easy thing to do that town could easily capable.
Okay, thank you. I'll take the name down. Right?
Amory can, can get you in touch with him if, if he works days. That's it, Madam Chair. That's all I have.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Wells and Ms. Collins.
Thank you, Madam Chair. It's really just, I'm not sure it's a question for our moderator. But if we're two weeks out and the warrant's been printed, are we able to change it to a remote meeting? That doesn't trigger some sort of notice?
I talked to town council about this and I don't know if Kevin is on tonight.
He is not on tonight. No.
Right. Once the, as you know, there's a standing state law that says in the event of some type of emergency, the moderator can reschedule. And he believes that if we have a COVID emergency, that would, we're, we're so concerned about it that the state would probably allow flexibility in the moderator to reschedule to the Zoom venue versus the, keep the night versus same venue, different night.
Just to follow up on that, that question came up this morning. Ms. Fagan and I were at a warrant proofreading session with the warrant committee clerk and Kathy Cassis, a member of the warrant committee and Karen Prevail. And Lynn Hoy, the warrant committee clerk, did ask that question about whether, how we were going to describe this town meeting in the, in the warrant. So, would it make sense, Bob, if we were to do that to, to let people know that it's scheduled for in-person? It's possible that if there's a spike in the COVID numbers, we would figure out the language about the emergency declaration that, that it could be transferred to a remote meeting, but that the current plan is for it to be in-person at the high school with the arrangements that you just reviewed with us.
I think that would make sense. But we do have email addresses for maybe 95% of the members at this time. And of course, mailing addresses and the clerk knows how to execute a letter. If it had to be in writing, we could certainly do that to change the venue at last, last minute. Yes, I can go to the warrant committee and modify the letter that I submitted to include some potentiality.
Yeah. And maybe we, there's somewhere in the, within the covers of the warrant committee that we can print that as well.
Yeah.
Right in the outside cover, it normally says that, you know, the location, Milton High School Auditorium, 7:30 PM. So, we could probably put in a footnote or something near that indicates that it's, the goal is for it to be in-person. The fallback would be remote. Aside from that notice to the town meeting members, I, I like your idea, Bob, to use the high school auditorium without members of the public being there unless they've informed you and you've given them permission to speak so that we can have more room to spread out the additional ventilation. And the mask islands all sounds like it's a good way to go with the, with the Zoom fallback. Any other members?
We've confirmed that citizens is a, is a privilege with a representative town meeting. It's not literally an open meeting as an open town meeting would be. So, we're within state law and guidelines to do so. Since they still have Channel 8, Channel 22, Facebook, you know, on-demand broadcast.
Okay. Any other members? Okay. Well, we're on the topic of logistical arrangements. Before we get into the articles, there's an update for everyone that in the discussion this morning on the proofreading of the warrant, the, the warrant is being put together this year using ClearGov, the software, which is, this is a new approach to assembling the warrant. And a question came up that the, the warrant committee clerk and the finance director were under the assumption that the warrant this year, instead of being the six-by-nine format book that we typically have, that because of the way ClearGov is functioning, that the warrant would be eight and a half by 11, it would be bound, but it would not be the size of the warrant that we're used to having. That actually had not been discussed at a board meeting or been voted at any time. But it came out of some discussions with some of the, the former town administrator, Mr. Denny, and some of the people I just mentioned as we went through last summer and into the early fall. So, right now, Ms. Fagan is following up the printer. We're trying to find out why the printer, apparently according to what we heard this morning, might have some issues with changing the Word document we give them and reducing the size and putting it in our customary format. We're hoping we're still going to be able to do that. Because of the short timing here, it's, there's a possibility we may need to have the warrant look a little bit different this year. And we're hoping that's not the case, but, but that's, I just want everyone to know that it's a possibility. And as everyone knows, we pushed the dates back. We, we are under a bit of a time crunch. We have some people with some long planned vacation time. And I, in particular, I want to thank the town administrator for all the time today that she spent helping proofread the warrant. And we need as many eyes as possible. Kathy Cassis from the warrant committee has been particularly helpful. And we're hoping we're going to get a lot more eyes when the next version comes out among the, the different volunteers in the town as well as the staff. So, we have to, we have to stay tuned as to what the format of the warrant is actually going to look like this year. Bob, I don't know if you have any thoughts on that, but just wanted you to be aware of it as well, that this is a software issue.
Am I working that business? I understand the software issues. I have some, a number of towns are using clear.gov and they're finding it useful to display information digitally. So, it's, I think that's a nice advance for the town.
Yeah, it's, it's great in terms of the pie charts and the graphs and the dashboard type information that's up on the town website. The problem we were finding is the font size, the print was extremely small and illegible in some places. And everything was showing up on a different page. So, there were a lot of formatting and font problems that we were running into, as well as other information being pie charts and whatnot being pulled into the warrant from ClearGov that don't have any relation to the articles. So, there's a lot of cleanup that's being done. But we'll get through it. We'll get, we'll get the warrant to the, to town meeting. We'll have a warrant for town meeting members. Just going to take, take some time this week.
Those bugs in your business, Bob?
What's that?
Are those called bugs in your business, in the software business?
If you're a customer, they're a bug. If you're the vendor, it's a feature. That's the difference.
Oh, boy. All right. Ms. Fagan, is there anything else from the proofing session that we should mention while we're on the town meeting? With the articles, we have lists that really are non-budget articles. But for, I'll just mention, for instance, there's one article, it's currently Article 26, which we only found out today that it relates to an MWRA borrowing, it's no interest borrowing for storm, for the, I think it's the sewer system. And that is no longer available. If we had known that in advance, we would have pulled that article out of the warrant entirely because of all these software features or bugs. It would, it would throw off, it would create a lot of additional work, throw off all the numbering, create a lot more work for the warrant committee clerk. So, we're going, it's going to remain in the warrant for this year, but there's really no appropriation for it. And we'll try to explain that through the warrant committee's comment. Someone will need to speak on our, our behalf at town meeting to the fact that that program just ended. So, we only found out recently. Then if we have nothing else that we want to go over with the moderator, we can, we can let him go. We can talk about some of these other articles if we want to vote any positions on them.
All good, Madam Chair.
All right. Mr. Hislop, thank you for coming in tonight.
Thank you all. Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline Cincella. Thank you. All right. We have on the agenda some of the articles that we have not yet voted. The first one is actually the land swap and that one was voted yesterday. So, I don't believe there's any reason to take that one up unless a member of the board has anything to report on that.
Let's go.
Okay.
Let's go.
Other than, I think, actually, Mr. Doyle may want to report on the Conservation Commission's vote. I'm, I'm recused on the substance of this, but I think, Mr. Doyle, if you just want to report out the conservation vote.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Following a very thoughtful online deliberation chaired by John Cannon, who's chair of the Conservation Commission, a vote was taken with a six-to-one vote supporting the exchange of conservation land at Gower Road and Blue's Parkway for all the town-owned lands.
Okay. Thank, thank you, Mr. Doyle. And Town Council is working on, for the warrant committee, the recommendation with, he told us he's working on getting legal descriptions. So, the other articles are Woodlock Drive, Community Preservation, Temporary Apartment By-Law Retirement Cost of Living and the Stormwater Appropriation. I think that's the rescission. So, does the board, and again, the board's going to be turning over. Maybe that the new board will want to vote new positions prior to the town meeting. But is there any interest among members of taking any positions on these articles tonight? And it is nine o'clock. We have other things on the agenda. If not, we can defer this and the board can take it up before town meeting. What's the, what's the pleasure of the board?
Madam Chair, how many do we have left to take a position?
Five.
So, Woodlock Drive, we've done, Community Preservation is one of them, one of the ones we need to take up.
Yeah, I don't think we voted a position, we voted to submit Woodlock Drive. I don't think we voted a position on it.
I make a motion that we support the acceptance of Woodlock Drive as a public way.
Seconded by Ms. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
CPA funds, Madam Chair. Did we vote that one or no?
We have not. We, and we have in the materials the, the recommended language from the Community Preservation Committee. So, we, we could take a vote on that one.
I, I don't have the language front. I'm looking through. I don't have the language in front of me. But I, if someone has, I would make a motion to approve that if you have it.
Yeah, what they're seeking is for, to use 51, so they're projecting revenue of $1,28,872. They're looking to use $51,400 for administrative expenses for the committee. They're looking to set aside $103,000 for each of Historic Resources, Community Housing and Open Space in a Reserve for those three purposes of the Community Preservation Funds. And that would leave them a general, what they're calling a budgeted reserve of $668,472. So, that's what they've asked. Tell me, that's what the warrant committee is recommending.
And do you have those numbers?
Yes, the, the grand total is $1,028,872.
I'll make a motion to approve that number with broken down categories as you've described, Madam Chair.
Okay. Okay. Seconded by Ms. Collins. Any discussion? All in favor? Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins? Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. There's also the citizens' petition on the temporary apartments, the retirement cost of living and the stormwater appropriation, rescission.
Do you think, Madam Chair, I'm not sure. Do you think we should, the citizens' petition, wait for the new board before we take a vote on that one?
We, we could. I, you know, up to whatever the majority wants to do, I, there are. I, there are conflicting positions between the planning board and the Warren Committee. The planning board is asking that it be sent to them for study. The Warren Committee is recommended in favor of the temporary apartment by law. So we could. We don't yet have the the comment or the full language from the Warren Committee in their report or their comment in the draft of the warrant. That the Senate should defer that and to a later date.
This is my own. I see Michael shake, I don't know where Arthur, I think that's probably an easier decision to make.
All right, the retirement one may be easier. This is a cost of living increase of three thousand dollars.
I'd make it, it doesn't apply to me, but I'm not going to make it just for the security. I won't make that one, it won't apply to me, though.
Madam Chair, I'll move that we support the retirement board cost of living increased article.
I'll say it.
Okay. Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells, are you going to abstain?
Yeah, abstain, yes.
Okay. And myself, yes. All right, and then we have stormwater rescission. This is to rescind a fifty thousand dollar vote from the, I don't actually see the article in this package in the warrant. And to rescind a vote of fifty thousand dollars from actually, the copy that I have of the warrant had the had the incorrect article. So I don't have the exact language right in front of me. But Ms. Fagan, do you remember offhand, I think it was from the December twenty twenty town meeting?
This is to, it was from the May third, twenty twenty one. It's the fiscal twenty two stormwater article, and we need to rescind it because due to an accounting error in this switch from town accountants, a fifty thousand dollar amount was not moved out of that account. So it was voted at that town meeting. So we have to reduce that budget, that fiscal twenty two budget by fifty thousand.
Madam Chair, I'll make a motion to rescind that article and reduce the FY twenty two stormwater article by fifty thousand dollars. I'll say it.
Second.
Go ahead, Mike.
Second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay, I think that's all of the articles. And that brings us to item nine. Just want to be sure that the public agenda matches. The next item I have is the Aldrin Corner Stormwater, which I thought was item on our agenda.
It's item nine, well, it's item nine and the one I have, Madam Chair.
Okay. I just don't want to skip over anything. So I just as a brief update for the board on Aldrin Corners, so I'll be sure we're all on the same page. Town Council updated, he updated me on this, and I went over it again with him today with Ms. Fagan. And I believe he's also talked with Mr. Doyle and Mr. Berkeley. Where, as everyone knows, on behalf of the Department of Public Works, Town Council asked for an opinion from the State Executive Office of Energy and Environmental Affairs as to whether the proposed stormwater retention project would be consistent with the land being Article ninety seven land, assuming that it is Article ninety seven land. What he has heard back in recent days from the state agency is that this is a a new issue for them. They have not had a similar request before, and they are going to be sending us written guidance within probably the next couple of weeks. But that the the advice to the town is that the town should consider both putting the land into Article ninety seven, either through a transfer to the Park Department or to the Conservation Commission, and at the same time, and in conjunction with that, seeking to carve out or approve the stormwater retention project as being consistent and not a change of use, but consistent with Article ninety seven. So that would require some time. It would require a vote of the board, a town meeting vote, possibly something that could go to town meeting as early as October. But essentially, the idea here is to formalize this as Article ninety seven land with the request to change in use for the stormwater project and then go through the Article ninety seven process. Again, through the town meeting process and then through a home rule petition to the state, very similar to what we're doing for the land swap article at Guile Road. So that was, that's that is the latest, and I wanted to report that to the full board because I won't be on the board in a couple of weeks. And that's specifically why I asked Mr. Fryte to also update Mr. Doyle and Chase Berkeley to make sure that all of us are on the same page. All right, Finance Committee report. When I go to Mr. Zulus?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't think there's any update other than the item ten A, the FY twenty three budget. As I understand it, has been approved by the Warren Committee as proposed by the town administrator and as proposed by the town administrator. And so that's good. And then item ten B, we have nothing further on offer that we haven't acted on, I don't believe. The next thing we're looking at is to hope to have applications in from our small businesses. I think we have one in, and we'll be taking those up the week after next for this board to act on either the week after next or thereafter. So hoping to get more applications in. We have one in, and we have a few contacts with a few other businesses, so we hope to have more in by the time we're ready to act on those week after next. Arthur, if I missed anything?
Just that, Mr. Chairman, you did a good overview, the one addition is on arrival today of the request from DPW and Public Works that we'll be considering in our next meeting. And I just want to encourage the town to consider looking at all of the possibilities. It does take time to go through the review process. The vast majority of remaining funds with the Norfolk County based funds, and that review process is deliberative and time pursuing. So anything that people can put up front would be very, very helpful. We do have a balance of what, about four hundred thousand dollars in the direct federal grant from Treasury? And we discussed at our last meeting, the wisdom of be sure we maintain a portion of that and the possibility that there is an uptick in COVID that would require immediate fund access to funds for testing and other COVID related purposes. That's about it.
And and just to, that those are, thank her, Arthur, for for bringing those up. And just to supplement, in addition to the four hundred thousand dollars of Treasury funds that have not yet been allocated, we have about one point eight million in county funds that have not been allocated. Not all of them have been spent, but they've been appropriated by this board. So out of the approximately eight point three million total of ARPA funds, we have appropriated, we have still about two point two million that have not yet been appropriated by this board.
If I may.
And that includes, those appropriations include the five hundred thousand appropriated for small business, so not spent yet, but appropriate.
If I may make one addition, Mr. Chairman, on the county side, after a period of time, unused funds by, and I think we mentioned this at one other time, unused funds by other communities will go back into a county pool for reallocation to other communities. So that gives us an incentive to make sure that we earmark the remainder of our Norfolk County funds and then have a couple of projects in line so that if we have a reallocation of additional funds from other communities from the pool, we're in a good position to capitalize upon that opportunity.
Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a question for e- either Arthur or Michael. What's the sunset on the allocation and dispersment of that remaining two point two? Are all county and federal funds?
Allocation, December thirty one, twenty twenty four, use, I think, twenty twenty six.
Okay, oh, that's good. All right. Thank you. I was hoping you weren't going to say seven, one, twenty two. A seven, I mean, seven, one, twenty three.
And just an acknowledgement of the tremendous job that Karen Pabell has done in working with the Finance Committee on the ARPA funds. She's been wonderful.
Correct, she has a great hold on the town's finances and a very sharp there at town, she's been great.
Okay, so thank you to the Finance Committee for all of all of your work that's ongoing. Sounds like you have more on your plate very soon. We're on to policies and procedures, and I'll go back to Mr. Zulus.
Thank you, Madam Chair. These are the policies that we discussed very briefly at our first read last meeting. We do have some some comments from yourself, Madam Chair, on the policies. I don't know if the members have had the opportunity to to go through those. So I think, based on that, those relate to the the changes relate to the policy one, the Select Board Operational Goals and Objectives to the membership and term of office. The member resignation. Member ethics, I'm just, I'm just going through to see if there are, if there are any that we don't have any changes on.
There are some, and there are some that, you know, are not as important as others. If you want, I could highlight, but I think it's just the the main ones.
Yeah, and 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 so, so, yeah, why don't we do that? Why don't we go through, if you want to highlight the main ones, and then the question is whether the members are comfortable voting them? It looks like there are one, two, three, four, for which we don't have any comments, one, two, three, four, I believe that's right. And then we have one, two, three, four, five, for which we do have comments. So presumably, we could vote the ones that we don't have comments, and perhaps we could vote the ones that we do have comments if members are comfortable.
Yeah, and it's really two of them that are my, you know, the most significant comments, but so I'll just go, like Mr. Doyle did last week with some changes, I'll just mention what my, the first one is on resignation vacancies, extended absences, unexpired term fulfillment. That policy. The main thought I had is in paragraph three. So my thought, right now, it says that if there's a failure on the part of the town to elect, or if a vacancy occurs on the board, the remaining members shall inform the TA and the public. And then it goes on and talks about the process by which the board would meet to appoint a new member. It seemed to me that, you know, if if that happened in January and the term was expiring in April, the board may not want to fill that vacancy and just let it be vacant for four months. I thought we could add in that second line, after the words, and the public, you know, and may come in their discretion, come or appoint a new member. So that it gives the board, it's not a requirement then that the board have to appoint somebody. It, you know, it may be that if it's a longer period of the vacancy, it would make sense to do it. And if it's a very short vacancy, it wouldn't. So that's just a suggestion. I also thought we should that would then make a couple of subsequent little changes, like appoint rather than elect a new member. But I also thought at the end of that sentence, we should say until the next town election, since we're using the word election earlier. So that so that was one of the main ones. The the other one is on the organizational meeting. In the first paragraph, it says that the board would reorganize seven calendar days following the annual town election. Now, that's going to be the case here because the board will need to elect a new chair. But the chair is sometimes is is not up for election in a given year. And what we've done, at least in the past, I don't know, it's been five or six years, I think, we've we've wanted the the chair and now the vice chair and the secretary to remain in place through town meeting. We've done the reorganization meeting right after town meeting rather than right after the election. Obviously, in this case, you're going to have to have a an a reorganization meeting right before, right after the election. But in many years.
I was going to make a motion to keep you for town meeting.
But in many years, it's after town meeting. The idea being that the, and and maybe, you know, it may be that we don't want to continue doing that, but but the idea was that that if the officers changed, then the the chair had been the one working a lot and the budget being at a lot of the Warren Committee meetings, especially when it was a three-member board, you know, maybe a little bit less so now that it's five. But and then we elect a new chair, and then that is the person who's speaking at town meeting and hasn't been as involved as the prior chair was. So that that was the reason we switched that practice. And I just wanted to remind us of that and bring that up. But it's also usually been the current chair who stays as the who begins the reorganization meeting rather than the TA or the longest serving member by a number of years. So those are just, those are the main two. The others, I'm not as, you know, I I'm happy to just go with the other three policies as they were, but those are the two that I thought were most worthy of discussion tonight. I I see Ms. Collins and Mr. Wells. Ms. Collins?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I think your your suggestions on the policy regarding vacancies are just right. And also, thank you for reminding us about, you know, what our our practice has been and why. And I think it makes sense to change it to track our practice. And since, though, we we find ourselves or or the the rest of the board members will find themselves in the circumstance of having to actually appoint a new chair prior to town meeting, you know, it's a blend of what you just said. And then keeping that that other procedure in case, you know, a new chair must be chosen.
Okay, Mr. Wells?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Given that in two weeks, I'm entering my sixth year here, I agree completely with your comments on both of those items. I just do it. We're going to be faced with this. I mean, fortunately, Arthur's your vice chair now. I mean, we'll be faced with this in two weeks because it's very difficult as a brand of chairs, come chair on Monday and have to go to town meeting on Tuesday. It just, I think those make sense, maybe the same with the death. But I mean, knock on wood, we never had a death here, but anything could happen. I think those are all common sense responses. So I I'm willing to vote tonight on everything that Mr. Zulus suggested, including the others with your comments, including.
Let's narrow it, at least just to those two, because I'm ignore the comments on the other three. Yeah, they weren't very major anyway. Mr. Zulus, any thoughts on that?
Sorry, no, I think that I think that makes, I think that makes good sense. So the two with the changes would be the Select Board Organizational Meeting and the Select Board Member Resignation Vacancies. Those would be the amended.
Yes.
Is that right?
Yes, yes. And I'll make a motion just on those two right there, just to get it done on those two. And that, and as well as, did you say there's three, Michael, that have, or four that have no comments at all?
So so in addition to those two, there are seven additional policies. And Katie had offered some comments, as she mentioned, a little more ministerial for three others, and we could we could include those as well. I think those are, I think those comments were well taken as well. So so
I'll make a motion on all seven. I'll make it on all seven to approve.
Well, you could make it on all nine.
Or all nine, I'm sorry, all nine and all nine.
With it with the changes that Katie made to the to the five, which were the first, the fifth, the sixth, the seventh, and the eighth.
Did you get that list?
Second.
Done.
All right. Any discussion on the motion? Okay, then, I, you know, Mr. Zulus has the pen here, so we probably want to delegate it to him to turn these new drafts around to Lynn at some point, you know, it may be two weeks from now, that's which is fine, but and to, one idea would be to get them into a booklet form or a binder that we give to the two new members, whoever they may be, who are joining the board on April twenty sixth. All right, any discussion then? If not, I'll go to vote, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. All right, thank you all. Thank you to Mike and Melinda for all the work on, he's going back the last three years. They've come back and forth on to different agendas, so thank you both.
It was great. That was half a page of, half a page of agenda we just did.
That's right. And now we're on to, now we're up to number twelve. That's right. And now we're on to, now we're up to number 12, Town Administrator Screening Committee, which is you, Mr. Wells, and Mr. Zulus.
You want me to, I'd just be very brief, Madam Chair. We had a great intro meeting with Maria Carty and all the members, with the exception of one. We have elected Glenn Pavlichek as the chair. They do expect this, they do expect this to be very quick. I believe, Michael, we'd go in, they'd like to come in with a charge on the 25th, if we could maybe find a way morning or afternoon. I don't think we'd need more than an hour. You can comment, then I might go, or add your comments. I think it'll be pretty quick, but she wouldn't be able to do it next week. The 25th would be the earliest, and Michael and I both think that this board, this current existing board should be the voice on that.
Okay, so...
And, oh.
Oh, go ahead, Mr. Zulus.
I was just going to say, Ms. Carty has circulated a Google document to make comments on members of the board. This board have it, they can submit their comments to her. She's going to aggregate the comments from the committee and from the members of this board, and as Richard mentioned, it'd be good, given the fact that all these members have background, if we could approve that profile prior to the election, and then we can get out a, start advertising it and get, get the show on the road.
Well, first, I'm glad that you selected Glenn Pavlichek. He's a great choice to be the chair, so that's wonderful news. And-
True stars, we true stars.
It's shorter Glenn, ahead of time.
So Monday, the 25th, you're looking at a daytime meeting for that?
I think whatever suits the board, Madam Chair, should be ready for whatever. It's, we don't need the committee, we just need ourselves. So she's been, yeah, she's been very proactive in this. I mean, I think, speaking of, she's, she's got her ducks, like, already lined up. They know what they're doing here.
Okay, well, that's terrific. All right, why don't, so if we need her availability too, then why don't we try to work with Lynn offline? We can try to schedule a time. Let's pick that date, Monday, the 25th, but work on scheduling a time that is convenient for everyone, hopefully a daytime meeting.
That'd be great.
Monday nights are not difficult for me, anyway, but that's also the night before the election, and there's usually a lot of activity that night in town, so we may want to try to avoid an evening meeting that night.
And I think it's clear that, oh, sorry, I was going to say, I think it's clear that, you know, the interim town administrator is not precluded from applying if she wants to.
I told her the same thing the other day.
I'm surprised she hasn't already left us with everything she's dealing with.
I still have my handcuffs, so I'm going to cuff it to that desk until you drop there.
All right, so we're going to schedule that offline. I'm going to mention to another item, potentially for the 25th, when we get later, the next, later item in the agenda. Then the next item, is there anything else on that topic? Does anyone have any questions for our two committee members? Okay, all right, the next item is a proposed contract between Cook and Company and the town relating to employee benefits. We received tonight an email from Town Council with some changes that he was suggesting be made to this agreement that have not gone over to Cook and Company. He was not aware that this was on the agenda tonight. So, you know, we could either defer this, or we could approve it with Town Council's comments, and then if, which he said are standard, and if Cook and Company should come back with some changes, the board may need to revote it. What's the preference of the board?
I'm going to recuse Madam Chair.
Okay. Anyone else have a preference, then, of?
Whether or not these are substantive changes?
According to Town Council, they're pretty standard. Let me just pull up his email. I forwarded during, it came in during the meetings at 7:26 tonight, so I forwarded it to everyone, but let me pull it up on my screen. Actually, I don't, the changes are not jumping out in a red line format. Let me just try the other version. Okay, it looks like he's used his form rather than their form, so it is a longer document. I think, just I'm looking at this, we probably need to defer this item. Ms. Fagan, yes?
Yeah, Madam Chair, I think you should defer the item, and I will speak with the HR Director and Kevin Fryte tomorrow.
Okay. All right, does that agree with everybody?
I think that makes sense.
All right, you know, it's possible if we need to meet on the, on the 25th, or if we need to meet earlier next week about the annual town meeting warrant, and we can discuss that under future dates. We could add it on if it's resolved before then. It's just as a short vote. All right, item 14, Ms. Collins, on dissolution of the Housing Committee.
Thank you, Madam Chair. On Monday evening, well, all members of the Housing Committee, save for Arthur Doyle, who was representing the board at a meeting with residents and Chief King, met to, well, formalize what we had discussed earlier in the month about the Housing Committee and its future. After discussing, well, how it's, how it's gone over the past four years, working together with the Affordable Housing Trust, the two groups, as well as the Planning Department, thought that there had been some gains made, and a number of events, including the 40Bs that have given us safe harbor, at least temporarily, made it unnecessary to have a separate housing committee. The CPA has also made the Affordable Housing Trust, or put it in a stronger position to continue to work on affordable housing, and that, that will continue to grow. We already voted to support the first CPA article, and again, just a big thank you to all the people who worked on that campaign. So it was felt that, really, at this point, with the Affordable Housing Trust being in such a strong position, housing having become a topic that many residents are now aware of and concerned about, and also our newly reinvigorated Fair Housing Committee, which is being worked on at the moment, thanks to a technical grant that Tim Zierwinski, our Planning Director, had secured. It just seems like the Housing Committee wasn't necessarily needed anymore, and might actually complicate things. However, the Housing Committee wanted, wanted me, as chair, to convey that we didn't make the recommendation lightly, and nor does it reflect a lack of interest in the broader issues of housing type and supply affordability, and all the social, economic, and environmental concerns that surround that. We very much acknowledge that the Select Board has led in this time on housing, and want to not only convey our deep thanks, but also to just reiterate that there, the leadership of the Select Board will continue to be needed. The Select Board has been a positive model on how to think about and work together to move forward on something that, you know, can be, I think, difficult in some ways for residents to really grapple with. It's a complex topic. It's a topic that, if you haven't had personal experience with, it can be really difficult to understand, and that's not to criticize anyone. Again, it's, it's something that, if you, if you haven't faced homelessness or being cost burdened, it can be really very difficult. So we urge the, this Select Board to continue working on this, and, and want to thank a few people, including yourselves. The Planning Department, the Director of Planning Community Development, Tim Zierwinski, and the former Assistant Town Planner, Allison Quinn. Even though she's not here, we still thank her. Also, the trustees of the Affordable Housing have been indispensable to, to our education and formulation of the Housing Production Plan, the Master Plan Implementation Committee, the Planning Board, and, and our own Select Board staff, as well as everyone who's served on the committee, and residents who have supported affordable housing. We, we really have deep thanks for all these people, and wish them every success, and are also, you know, going to continue to be involved. So we wish these people success, but also we're there to stand with you and, and continue to work with you in various sizes. So as I said, we did have a vote Monday, and we voted to recommend that the Select Board dissolve the Housing Committee and make room for the Affordable Housing Trust, the Fair Housing Committee, to continue their good work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Collins. And we said it last week, but I think it bears repeating. This was the brainchild of Ms. Collins, and she led the effort, and she led the Housing Committee for four years on the board, and contributed significantly to not only the Housing Production Plan, but in so many other ways of educating residents and moving the ball forward on housing. And so we, why don't we have a round of applause for Ms. Collins and all of her efforts on housing and all of her leadership. Thank you, thank you, Ms. Collins. Would you like to make the motions? You were the one who proposed creating committee. Do you want to be the one to make the motion?
Well, I'd be happy to, Madam Chair, but I do want to acknowledge that you've been such an asset, not just to the Housing Committee, but to the Affordable Housing Trust. And, and I know Mr. Wells also served on the trust, and Mr. Doyle has served on the Housing Committee, and Mr. Zulus has backed us up all the way. So it's, it's been a team effort, but thank you for the acknowledgement. I do appreciate it. So I will move with some sadness, but, but a lot of appreciation that, that we dissolve the Housing Committee.
Second.
Any discussion? Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Do you want to vote normal on this, or this isn't unanimous? Do you want one of my loud goes? Yes.
And myself, yes. All right. Thank you very much. The next item is good news. It's a, we're seeking to appoint Danya Raphael, who is a member of the Housing Committee, to the Affordable Housing Trust. Do we have a?
I'll second that. You read that as a motion, Madam Chair.
All right, I'll make, all right, and I will move that, and Mr. Wells has seconded Danya Raphael's appointment to the Housing Trust. Any discussion? Other than thanking her for her willingness to stay involved and to stay on and move over to another committee? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Good news, and we'll have, as we said earlier, we'll have two more appointments for the new board to fill on that committee. And we're hoping that the Equity and Justice folks can help us out with some additional appointments. We now have a series of one-day liquor licenses, starting with Curry College and then Milton Academy.
I'll start, Madam Chair. I'm going to move them quick. I'll make a motion to approve a one-day liquor license for Milton Academy on June, I actually jumped, I'll go back, on June 17, 2022, for their reunion weekend events. 25th reunion reception, 50th reunion reception, all-class party. Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
Madam Chair, I'm going to back up to the Curry one. I'll move to approve a one-day liquor license to Curry College on April 28, 2022, casino night to benefit the Jimmy Fund.
Okay.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes.
And finally, Madam Chair, I'll move to approve a one-day liquor license to Milton Academy on June 18, 2022, for their reunion weekend events, 55th, 60th, 70th, 75th reunion dinner, 50th reunion dinner, 60th reunion dinner, 30th, 30th, 35th, 40th, 45th reunion dinner, 15th, 20th, 25th reunion dinner, 10th reunion dinner. Second.
All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells? And Ms. Conlon, yes. Okay. All right, we now have some proclamations. We have an Earth Day proclamation that Lyndon Appleby has put forward for us, using some that we've enacted in the past.
Madam Chair, to accept the Earth Day proclamation?
Second.
Second.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. And we're going to, we're going to put these up on the town website. Then the next item is, is just an update. We have a request from, from DPW and also Sustainable Milton that we just publicized that they're going to be holding a Green Up Milton Weekend on the weekend of April 30th through May 1st. DPW will be providing supplies, including garbage bags, recycling bags, work gloves that can be picked up during the week of the event. There, the, both organizations are encouraging local associations, civic organizations, the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, religious organizations, any other civic organization in town to take part in cleaning up the town, to maintain the beauty of our town, and to also promote proper disposal practices and help combat the effects that littering has on our local environment. So there is some information, I don't know if this has gone out through the town email distribution, if it hasn't, perhaps we can get that out tomorrow, just to publicize it a little bit more, but we're just letting everyone know that this is, this event will be taking place April 30th through May 1st. We now have another proclamation for Arbor Day.
Madam Chair, I will accept the 20, the 2022 Arbor Day proclamation. Second. Okay, Melinda, second.
Okay, all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And Ms. Conlon, yes. I believe we are now on to the Town Administrator's Report. We didn't skip anything on the agenda. No, okay. Ms. Fagan?
Yes, Madam Chair. I just want to take a few minutes to thank you for all the years of service that you have given to the town of Milton. I have worked with you for a number of years, and your work ethic is, is unbelievable. I, day, night, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, you would be calling, emailing, working, and your love for this town is immeasurable. And I, for one, think this is a huge loss on the board, but I do understand that you now need to take some time for you and enjoy your life. So I thank you. It was a pleasure working with you all those years. Melinda, I didn't get the chance to work with you for very long, but this short time that I have worked with you, your dedication to the needy housing, just the environment, is immeasurable. You're passionate, you're passionate about those subjects, and you give your all to those subjects, and the town is better off for you being so passionate about those. So I thank you, and I wish you well in your private life as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fagan. Thank you for the kind words. Chair's report. So I would just like to take an opportunity, and I really try to be very brief here. I want to thank the voters for giving me an opportunity to serve. It's been an honor and a privilege to serve on this board. I have to thank all of those people who helped me get elected in the first place, and my colleagues, past and present, not only the four of you who are here this evening, but also Tom Hurley, David Burns, Dennis Cohane- but also Tom Hurley, David Burns, Dennis Cohane, and Tony Farrington, whom I've all had the privilege of serving. As Anne Marie Fagan said, I served with two town administrators, both Anne Marie and Mike Dennehy, and I thank them both. They both brought different things to the job. And it was a pleasure to work with both of them. And I'm very, was very surprised when we had an opportunity to bring Anne Marie back in February, but I'm really delighted to close out my years of service working with Anne Marie, whom I worked with for the first four years on the board, and appreciate all of her efforts that she's given to the town over the years. It's it's really been a pleasure. And and of course, we want to thank everyone else, all the town employees, all the volunteer boards and committee members. There's been a lot of change in nine years. I look back and I think when I first came on in twenty thirteen, we had three members. We were in the Cronin Room. We were Board of Selectmen. We were in a Select Board. We used to do things like sign payroll warrants and vendor warrants and interview job applicants. I remember Mr. Wells, when he was the chief, coming in with the police cadets. And we used to go through a series of questions even for the at the cadet level. And we we changed all of that when we went to the stronger town administrator, which was a a good step for the town. And there've been so many other issues that have come up over the years that I've had an opportunity to have a a small hand. And so I'm just very grateful for the opportunity to have served and looking forward to having a little bit of free time. And I'm sure my colleagues at work will be happy to have me back in the office on a little more regular basis. I remember, I remember Burne Lovely saying that when he stepped off the school committee. And I I think it's, it it applies to all of us who serve on any of these volunteer boards. It is such a huge commitment of time, but you don't do it unless you want to do it. And you love the town, you want to contribute something. So it's been a great honor and I especially want to thank all of the residents of the town, all the voters and all of you. I have nothing else to report this evening, so why don't we go to Members Reports? And why don't we start, why don't we start with Ms. Collins?
Second.
Thank you, Madam Chair. You 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 said it so well. I I'm not sure I really need to to say what I was going to say. I I I do agree. It it is an enormous honor. And until you've actually been in this position, you don't realize what an honor it is when people entrust you with with their their town, their quality of life, their their daily experience. And I can't believe, I'll I'll probably be unpacking for a long time everything that I've learned and and I'll find new appreciation in in years to come for this experience and for all the people I've gotten to meet. That's been one of the best parts, just understanding a little bit better about how our town works and how well it works. So just been a tremendous experience to to just be in the company and work with our our staff and to work with each of you. And as you said, I, Tony also started out serving on the board when I began. But you all bring something so unique. And I just am really grateful at how we worked together and listened to each other and and could bump up against each other when we were trying to figure things out. And and I just think this board has a great spirit of of working together with camaraderie and not not afraid to disagree. So thank you. And 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 in particular, our staff, all the different staff we've had in the Select Board Office. And it's it's been delightful to get to know each 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 one of them. All the people who did support me as well. I I I want to thank them and I have my little list of thank you notes that'll be going out. But I I think I'll I'll leave it there and and just say I'm looking forward to seeing everyone at town meeting.
Anyone else this evening, Mr. Doyle? Any reports tonight?
I'll report, Madam Chair.
Mr. Zulus?
Well, I will add to, very briefly to what has been said. It has been my privilege and honor to work with both of you. Katie, you've been a steady and productive hand for a long time. And I think when you were first elected was when I was first elected to the School Committee nine years ago. And so we we had a little bit there and then we've had a little bit more over the last four years of working together. So that's been, that's been, that's been very and something that I will always cherish. And then Melinda, I think Anne Marie really hit the nail on the head. Your passion for housing and for the environment and for the needy has been an inspiration and always will be. And and finally, for the both of you, I will note the very positive view of you ain't going nowhere because you're gonna continue to contribute. You've already been appointed to other committees. You're gonna do more things. And I look forward to the next stage and to working with you going forward. So so this is not the end. This is just, this is the beginning of the next chapter. And I'll look forward, I'll look forward to your contributions and working with you going forward.
Just remember what Richard and Michael did to Glenn. Be prepared.
Thank you, Mr. Zulus. Mr. Wells, any report this evening?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I I just want to follow up and say just a couple of comments. This is always, it's probably five years, because you are correct, things have changed so much since I first got here, five years, and it was you, David, and I in the Cronin Room. And the meetings were over at eight-thirty. Then Mike Zulus came and now we're hitting midnight. I mean, it's all his fault, but I mean, first, Melinda, to you, I remember when you, I first met you when you ran and I couldn't believe that, given my own background and now I was here and never thought I'd be here, that you would step into this role of leadership and you've done so with such grace and dignity. And you've been an active listener and and passionate contributor in so many ways, to so many efforts. A humorous comment will be, on our first meeting was how, our first time together was town meeting, and you know what you said to me? We sat side by side and you know what you turned to me and said to me? Is it always this cold in here? And and for those of you who, Katie will remember this, especially when we were meeting at at the COA all the time in person, it was always freezing. Every night it was always so cold in there, but but listen, you've you've you're walking away from something that you helped shape and contribute and always be proud of that in in every way and every aspect that you did that. And to Katie, we want to partner some crime in a in a different way. And I remember, it's about five years ago, we're at, do you remember this? We were on the gazebo. I can't even remember what it was for. It was some memorial thing. And you and I wound up holding hands and you looked at me and said, did you ever think we'd be doing this? But I I want to say this to you, and I mean this from sincerity, because you know, I've dealt with you as a deputy chief in the Warren Committee when I was chief in the Warren.
Yeah.
When I, when I was chief and you were on this board, when you were first running, you came and met with me. Now, I think of my dear friend Mary Gormly when I think of you leaving here tonight. And even though you were very eloquent and direct as always, I know this has to be very hard. It's, I remember when I left the Police Department, it's hard to leave something you've given so much of. But in Mary's case, Mary made all the children, the public schools for children. In a similar fashion, you've done that for every resident of this town. You've you've made them your priority, you've made them every aspect of your personal time in so many ways, more than most people, including us, will probably ever imagine. How you have the time to read and go over things, I can't, I still, I s- I have no clue. I couldn't do it. But it's been, it's been a great time. I I am sad that you're leaving. I hate this time because whether we all agree or disagree, for the most part, all of us come here each week. It seems like every day now, the number of meetings we have. I was, what I was trying to do is I was trying to figure out how many meetings we had a year five years ago compared to now, but I just didn't have you've, you're leaving here, leaving a legacy, much like people like John Cronin and Marvin Gordon and Rick Neely and people, Anne Marie, people who, you know, my own dad worked for this community for forty-four years. You've you've you're leaving it in a similar fashion. Just look back at, like, when you drive by five-twenty-five, which we're never in anymore, can't never, look at that building and ask yourself, is it a little bit better now than before you ever walked in the door? And when you look at the totality of all the ways you've contributed to this, I think the answer is a resounding yes. So you'll be missed and, as Michael says, you're not going far. So we'll see you at a town meeting. You may have to speak first, because maybe this is, we can't answer. Congratulations to you both and it's been an honor to serve both.
Thank you for those kind words, Richard. Now, every time I go by Town Hall, I'll think of it as five-twenty-five. I wasn't quite sure at first what you were referring to.
So in in the Police Department, you, and the fire as well, you know all of them by the numbers. You call, always refer the number first. So to me, I never call it Town Hall, it's just five-twenty-five.
Ah, okay. I we, I've gotten into that with the forty Bs now. It seems like we know them as, we know them as five-eighty-two or six-forty-eight or seven-twenty-eight. So thank you for the kind words. People like Marvin Gordon are real giants, so I I'm not in that category, but I I appreciate the kind words, Richard, and all of you. Next, we didn't have any public comment, we did have public comments tonight. Do we have any public comment response? Actually, I'm sorry, I skipped over a topic. We Mr. Doyle, actually, you were going to mention, you were going to give a short report on, under the Members Reports on the Route one thirty-eight Voshill Neighborhood Traffic Meeting. We have that on the agenda.
That's correct, Madam Chair. And this was a meeting organized by the Voshill Neighborhood Association on the leadership of Mary Jane Walker. It was held at Council on Aging this week. Melinda alluded to it a little earlier in her comments. The the title of the meeting or the purpose of the meeting was traffic enforcement and speed mitigation, particularly as a result of the tragic fatality on one thirty-eight just recently. Approximately forty-plus people attended the meeting. It was very deliberate, very well conducted, extremely thoughtful. Questions were asked, recommendations were made. Chief King and Lieutenant Mike Alba spoke on behalf of the Police Department. And there has been a subsequent follow-up from the discussion between the chief and Mary Jane Walker. Couple of the highlights were clear delineation of what the Milton Police have as their policing authority on one thirty-eight and then what the state responsibility is. And the need for advocacy for any changes in the roadway, with that advocacy being directed, of course, at the state level. And that was very warmly embraced by the participants in the meeting with, again, several recommendations that will be entertained by the Police Department and conveyed to the Traffic Commission, which is headed by DPW Director Chase Berkeley. Overall, it was very positive. It was, from my perspective, a very professional and successful meeting with next steps to follow.
All right, thank you, Mr. Doyle. Thank you for attending and for giving us that report. Do we have any public comment response? Future agenda dates. So in addition to the twenty-fifth, we may need to schedule something for next week. The warrant is supposed to go to the printer on Wednesday. The Warren Committee is not planning on voting, meeting again to vote on any additional articles. They have not yet voted the new land swap article. But if we could get a quorum together, we could have a short five-minute meeting to approve the warrant. It just hasn't, was not informed for tonight and it's not on the agenda tonight because we weren't sure when the Warren Committee would have it ready. So we we could take this offline and see if we could set something up for Tuesday or Wednesday. We would have to post it tomorrow, I believe, for Tuesday or or Friday, if we wanted to meet on Wednesday morning before it goes to print. So maybe offline, if everyone could look at their schedule and just, even if we only have three of us, it's just a short approval of the warrant. And everyone will have an opportunity to review the warrant again. A draft went out yesterday. If you haven't looked at that yet, I suggest waiting until the next version. While the cleanup and all the extra pie charts that wound up in the warrant come out and it's a little bit more customary for what we're, what we were expecting to see. So maybe we could schedule that offline, if everyone could let Lynn know if there's any availability Tuesday or Wednesday.
Definitely, Madam Chair, definitely maytime. A date, I'm sorry, daytime, maytime.
Well, you we, you know, I
Oh, that's what it's easier, whatever. That's fine. Eight days easier.
Okay, yeah, if if we have to, we can do evening, but either way, it'll be a short, short meeting. And then the other
If I may, I just wanted to mention, you may be aware of this, that the Warren Committee could not have a quorum this week due to a vacation. A future day, meeting day has not yet been set by the Warren Committee.
Okay, thank you. And then while we're on the topic of scheduling for the twenty-fifth, Mr. Dennehy had been following up with the Connollys regarding the Henrys development. And I connected again with Steve Connolly in recent weeks and again yesterday. And regarding the Henrys project, just to see if we could get in, get the board in and maybe the Affordable Housing Trustees in to see some of the units and to get a little bit of a tour, to just see the project and maybe to do something like a ribbon cutting or some kind of an event to really celebrate the fact that it's it's almost, it's very close to being completed. And it's actually good news for the town. We've had a lot of difficulties in recent months with the March Town Meeting, with the, you know, four-forty granted has had a long protracted process. We've had all the forty Bs, the pandemic. Henrys is something that was a hot topic for a lot of years and has kind of fallen off the radar because it's moved along in such a successful way in in the last few years. But it's something that we may want to, and and the Connollys are willing to do something on the twenty-fifth. That was the date that they picked. So I'm hoping that we can schedule it for daytime, when we can get members of the board and some others, including the trustees, together to go in and see what some of the units look like and get, and and obviously Mrs. Fagan, who had a lot to do with this many years ago, a small group of people who could come out to some kind of an event. We would post it as a meeting of the board if we have a quorum, although I I don't think, we'll have to talk to Town Council about how we would handle it. Maybe we break the group up for tours because that would, that part would not be open to the public. So we could, we can figure that out. But I wanted to let the board know that we were looking at the twenty-fifth for that. So hopefully we could combine it with the timing, working for the town administrator profile meeting, yes of Mary.
That sounds good.
All right, do we have any? Is anything else, yes, Mr. Zulus?
If if I may raise with the the other two members who are going to be on the board after April twenty-sixth, the date for an organizational meeting. We will, the election is the twenty-sixth. We will thereafter be rudderless in some respects. And so we may want to meet sooner rather than later to have an organizational meeting, whether that's Wednesday, the twenty-seventh, the day after, that evening after, or somewhere sometime after that. It seems to me we may want to, we may want to do that. So I just, if we, if 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 we can just take a moment, the Madam Chair, to see if we, see if we want to fix on a date for that.
Sure. It obviously won't affect me, but you might want to just keep in mind the next night, the twenty-seventh, that's when the clerk usually has her swearing-in ceremony for new members.
That was my point exactly, Madam Chair. Maybe, Michael, we schedule it. I think it's, it's like six o'clock, Kate, isn't it like around, we schedule it upstairs in the Cronin?
Yeah, I think usually it's six, yeah.
Maybe we schedule it upstairs in the Cronin?
Yeah.
Okay. See how lucky you two are, there's two, there's another night gone. So much for going on the Red Sox.
I, twenty-seven, I was just taking my calendar, that's available. I think that's very wise. Big thing is to make sure that the two newly elected members ask for one in advance of the meeting.
Yeah, that's, she has, I I think we can check. Maybe Anne Marie can touch base with, or Lynn with, I think it's at six o'clock. And I I know it's it's immediately falling that night.
Right, yes.
And so we, i- if if it's at six, maybe we have our meeting at seven. If it's at six-thirty, maybe we do seven-thirty, you know?
It's quick.
If that works.
I'll check with the town clerk tomorrow and I'll email you.
Great.
Okay, good. Community happenings?
That was easy, that was easy.
That was easy?
It's gonna be, it's gonna be easy going forward.
All right, anyone, community happenings, anyone? All right, then, meeting minutes, we have a few dates. I just by what Mr. Wells just said, I had not had a chance really to read the February twenty-third or the March first minutes closely. They're they're fairly long. I think we might be able to shorten them a little bit. The March twenty-eighth minutes are the joint Um, the March twenty-eighth minutes are the joint meeting with the Warren Committee that I drafted, so, um, i- I, I'd be interested in deferring the twenty-third and the first if we can, if, if that's agreeable to the others, we could even do it next week if we had the five-minute meeting to approve the warrant.
All right, so Madam Chair, I want to make a motion to approve the meeting minutes for March twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Okay, I believe that is the last item on our agenda, other than the executive session, and again, for anyone watching, we, earlier in the evening, we deferred the meeting of the Governor Stoughton Trust, um, to a future date that the new board will, will take up. So I will move for the last time that we enter executive session, this time only to act on meeting minutes that are listed on the agenda September eighth, two thousand twenty-one, November eighth, two thousand twenty-one, and January twentieth, two thousand twenty-two, uh, and we would adjourn from the executive session, we would not return to open session, and that would be the only item on our executive session this evening. Seconded by Mr. Doyle, any discussion? And all in favor, Mr. Doyle?
Yes.
Mr. Zulus?
Yes.
Ms. Collins?
Yes.
Mr. Wells?
Yes.
And myself, yes. Thank you all, we are now in executive session.
Madam Chair, I'll make a mo-, but you have to make the motion.
Well, we have to wait a few minutes, well, M A T V.